Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular Tuesday night meeting of the City of Burbank today, February 5th, 2019. I would like to invite Lisa Argenziano, Argenzio, City Council President at the American Lutheran Church in Burbank, to the podium to lead us in tonight's invocation and flag salute. Will everyone please stand and remain standing for the flag salute?
I have some words written for me by Pastor Ryan Chaddick from American Lutheran Church. "In school, we all remember our teachers calling names out to take attendance. Amy, here. Alan, here. And then there was always the clever one. Lisa, present. Here. Present. Or, I'm here." These words are for attendance in schools, however, they're also some of the most ancient, simple, and profound litanies or public prayers we can speak. Here for good. I'm fully present in this moment to give what I can. I'm here for the common good. We speak our intentions with these words. I'm here, fully present, fully here, here for the good. That's what we are called to do as leaders, as public servants, lay leaders in spiritual communities, civil servants, or religious leaders. We are called to be present to this moment, to this meeting, to this hour, to this issue, to this call, and to this breath. Whether we are dealing with traffic policies, streetlights, or how to curate an even more just and hospitable city, or even how to care for our loved ones, we breathe and we answer the call to be here, to be here now. May you all breathe and may you all be here now." And now I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you for this opportunity.
Madam Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Jimenez, would you call the rule, please?
Councilmember Frutos?
Good evening, happy to be here.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Springer?
Here.
Mayor Gable Luddy?
Here.
Tonight, we have three announcements and two presentations. On behalf of the organizers of We Are Women Plus event, they have asked to remove item K3, the city sponsorship of the 2019 We Are Women's Plus event, from the agenda. The organizers are no longer seeking financial assistance from the city to host the event. Therefore, this item will not be presented during the reports to council this evening. Please join the council this Thursday, February 7th, for a budget study session. The meeting will be held at the Community Services Building, 150 North Third Street, in room 104, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The council will be discussing the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget and the city's financial forecast. Come be a part of the Burbank discussion on how to get systematically healthy for years to come. That is Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in room 104 in the Community Services Building at 150 North Third Street. For the final announcement, it's about a small cell and 5G wireless communications town hall. Burbank Water and Power would like to invite you to be part of a discussion on how 5G devices will be implemented in Burbank. A small cell and 5G wireless telecommunications town hall will be held on Wednesday, February 13th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Buena Vista Library, or on Thursday, February 28th, 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Community Services Building in room 104. For our first presentation this evening, I would like to invite Dale Gorman, Executive Director of the Kids Community Dental Clinic in Burbank, to join me at the podium to receive a proclamation in recognition of National Children's Dental Health Month. Before I read, well, let's see, where's our, here's our proclamation. I would like to read the proclamation first and then invite you and those who are with you this evening to say a few words to our community and the council. This is National Children's Dental Health Month. Everybody's smiling. See those teeth? Whereas in 1945, 49, the American Dental Association proclaimed February 8th as National Children's Dental Health Day, which was extended to a month-long recognition in 1955. And whereas the Kids Community Dental Clinic of Burbank evolved out of a need to fill a crucial gap in oral health care services for the children of low-income working families. And whereas their mission is to provide affordable, quality dental care and preventive education for children of the working poor in an environment conducive to promoting good health. And whereas chronic dental problems can lead to difficulty in eating, speaking, and concentrating, and serious tooth decay is an infectious disease for which there is no known immunization. And whereas routine dental examinations uncover problems that can be treated in the early stages when damage is minimal and restorations may be small. Now therefore, I, Emily Gable Luddy, Mayor of Burbank, do hereby proclaim February 2019 as the National Children's Dental Health Month, and encourage the citizens of Burbank to brush and floss daily, eat healthy foods, drink lots of water, and take their children to the dentist on a regular basis to prevent dental disease. And I thank those dedicated volunteers who serve the public at the Kids Community Dental Clinic. Congratulations, Dale.
Thank you.
Now, you have some speakers this evening and others who want to come up and join us?
All yours.
Okay, so during this month, generally, the American Dental Association provides awareness to us all and supports Give Kids a Smile events throughout the country. And we wrote a grant and received funding to screen 1,000 children in and around our area. We do 14,000 a year, but 1,000 children are supported by the ADA Foundation. And so we will be opening the doors at the clinic during spring break for Burbank schools. It's in the, towards the end of March. And LAUSD is the end of March. And for parochial schools, it's around Easter and April. So we invite all children under 18 years to come for free services during those days to bring awareness to taking care of their teeth for overall good health. Our teeth are so important, we just like to bring awareness to that every year. So, thank you. I have young people that I'd like to bring up, and they'd all like to speak, starting with Mark Montano.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, and everybody listening. I stand here before you tonight to give a personal testimony on my involvement with the Kids Community Dental Clinic. I had a unique career trajectory, which was vastly different from my involvement today. And what I can say is, my involvement with this clinic has transformed me critically into seeing how the daily efforts that I put in and that, and all the wonderful volunteers, their efforts, how they transformed the lives, how they transformed the lives of every single patient and parent that come in. Lots of families, unfortunately, don't have the same privileges, don't have the same benefits or access to dental care. And I challenge everybody listening right now to take some time, contemplate, and possibly donate or volunteer some of your time to the clinic. I guarantee it will be critically transformative, not only for your personal well-being, but to be able to say that you gave back to the City of Burbank and to the residents and the children in a unique way that you would have never done had you'd never been involved. Thank you all.
Okay, so, hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. Okay, so I found the clinic back in 2012. I found it for my sister and I. I got to know Dale and Anna, which is also in the clinic. She's an assistant. We used to go back and volunteer every weekend to make like goodie bags. And then, well, school started up and we went back and, I went back in 2017 during college and I started to volunteer because I decided I wanted to be a dental hygienist. I will be applying to the Pasadena Dental Hygiene Program this fall, and hopefully I get accepted. We just want to tell parents and children to prevent cavities by brushing, flossing, and seeing their dentist regularly. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paula Guzman, and I've been a Burbank resident for the past 15 years. I came here when I was eight years old and I attended all George Washington Elementary, John Muir Middle School, and John Burroughs High School. After high school, well, starting from my third grade, my very first dentist here in Burbank was the Kids Community Dental Clinic back where they were in the YMCA. And after, well, starting with them, they told me to brush every day, floss every day, and I did that exactly, and up to this day I have never gone a cavity. And, and, so luckily, after high school, I decided that I wanted to go into the dentistry field. I went to Concord Career College in North Hollywood and I got my dental assisting degree. And I went from dentist to dentist, and luckily, I ended up at the Kids Community Dental Clinic. So now I'm giving back what they gave me to those who needed the most, and I am forever grateful for them.
Good evening, my name is Ever Huerta. Thank you for the opportunity. And Madam Mayor and council members, it's, it's time to bring awareness to preventing cavities. Everyone needs their teeth, because without their teeth, we can't talk. Everyone needs a chance to have good teeth. From my experience, we all eat too many sugary treats and we will get cavities. If we don't learn how to take care of our teeth, we will get cavities. From personal experience, it's not fun. The Kids Community Dental Clinic is one of the very few nonprofits that want to teach everyone to brush and floss. They come to my elementary school, they came to my elementary school a few years ago. Every year, bring free dental services to Washington, Providencia, Miller, Disney, Emerson, and McKinley. Dale lectures at John Burroughs and Burbank High. They also go to a career fairies at middle schools. Three times a week, they travel to different schools to teach children about their teeth. Last year, they went to 130 locations. Thank you.
Okay, let's do a photo. Dale, would you get in the middle, maybe over here on my right, hold the certificate? Let's all move this way. Okay, we'll sort of center it around the podium. Wow, you know, Kids Town Clinic is launching careers.
We are.
This is great news.
Serious about helping. Right. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. For the second proclamation this evening, I would like to invite the Burbank Lions Club President Bud Elman to join me at the podium to accept this proclamation in honor of a milestone for the Burbank Lions Club, your 50th birthday.
Not mine. The Lions Club.
The Lions Club's 50th anniversary. Now, come on, you're bragging, you look like a young man. I'd like to read this proclamation, and I'd like to invite anyone who's with you this evening to join us. Whereas the members of the Burbank Noon Lions Club have provided 50 years of voluntary community service to meet the needs of all segments of the city's population and contributed many thousands of dollars to local nonprofits, helping Burbank residents. And whereas the Burbank Noon Lions have focused on vision services in many ways, including leading ongoing eyeglass recycling campaigns, collecting over 50,000 locally donated glasses to be repurposed for those living in poverty around the world. And whereas the club has provided free eye screening, comprehensive eye exams, prescription glasses, as well as needed eye surgeries for qualifying low-income homeless Burbank residents. And whereas through the Burbank Noon Lions Ear of the Lion program, many have received free hearing aids. And whereas with the financial assistance of the Burbank Community Development Grant, the club started the first free Lions eye screening program in California for children six months to six years, known as Kid Site Burbank, screening over 2,000 children and as a result, helping to save the vision of more than 200 children. And whereas the Noon Burbank Lions have sponsored art competitions for middle school students, hobby leadership program for outstanding high school juniors, Halloween parties for clients of the BCR, a place to grow, eye screenings for back to school, hosted Burbank teen dances, participated in Burbank Coordinating Council's campership and holiday basket programs, rang the bell for the Salvation Army's Red Cattle Day, provided transportation for the blind, coordinated services and programs for clients of Burbank Temporary Aid Center, as well as Kids Community Dental Clinic, Boys and Girls Club Burbank, Burbank Housing Corporation, Burbank YMCA, and donated equipment and reading material to the Burbank library system for the visually impaired. Now therefore, I, Emily Gable Luddy, Mayor Burbank, do hereby present this commendation to the Burbank Noon Lions Club for its 50 years of dedicated service to the Burbank community. Congratulations.
Would I like to say a few words? Of course. Thank you, Ms. Mayor and honored council members. You know, the Burbank Noon Lions has been around for 50 years, and we're not a huge service club in the Burbank city, but we are small and we are mighty. And as you can see by all the accomplishments that we have ongoing and have done in the past, we, we really, really work hard, and our motto as a lion is "We Serve." So, thank you so much for this proclamation.
You're welcome. Let's do a photo, so I'll have some of you over on this side of me and some of you on Bud's side. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just tell you that the lady who was talking to me from the audience wanted to thank the Lions because the Lions provided her with glasses. It's very gratifying. Okay, we're on item G of the evening. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
No, we do not.
Now we're at that time of general public comment. Persons speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business, or may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Please complete a, a yellow general public comment card. The comments are limited to three minutes. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum three-minute time. A timer will be on and available at the podium to help the speaker keep track of how much time is left. I have two cards. The first speaker I have is Constantine Anthony, and you'll be followed by Margot Rutter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council. Real quick, before I start, I, I got to know the KCDC, the Kids Community Dental Clinic, last year when I was in the Leadership Burbank Program, Class 2018, what, what. The, the program there is an amazing system. They, they have, they take care of kids all over the county. I mean, you can come in with no insurance, right then and there, get in line, and your kids are seen and taken care of, and it's an amazing volunteer program, like professional dentists come in and just donate their time. It's fantastic. What I want to talk to you today about, I sent council an email. Currently, I am now the Chairman of the newly-formed Burbank Tenants Rights Committee, and in the next few weeks, we've retained legal counsel to put together an ordinance that complies with Burbank Code, and we will be submitting it to the city attorney for verification to get a ballot measure on the 2020 ballot in November, so that rent control could be opened up to the citizens to see what they think should or should not go forward. I know it's been very contentious at City Council. A lot of folks that I've talked to don't want to put that pressure on you guys anymore. They feel it's important for the citizens to come out, make the effort, walk the, the streets, get the signatures. So what I'm asking you today is to put on the agenda a discussion about doing a short-term rent freeze while we debate this. What happens, we've seen it happen in Glendale and in Inglewood, and even Pasadena now is looking at rent control. Some landlords want to jump the gun and raise prices regardless if the measure passes or fails. And so what I'm asking is a three-step process to agendize a, a three-month rent freeze to see if the language of this ordinance gets approved by the city attorney so that we can go on to the signature phase. If that happens, then approve an additional six months so that we have time to get the signatures. And if that fails, again, you don't need to do anything else, but if that gets approved, add an additional 12 months so that we can see what happens on the date of the November ballot. So a three, a six, and then a 12-month freeze at each interval. You can even additionally add a cap on a rent if people, if you feel that people need some form of increase, a two or three or four percent raise in that amount of time. I don't believe most landlords are going to try to jump the gun and do this, but in the process, I don't want to start this initiative and have someone get kicked out or have their rent doubled for them for, you know, for fear of it passing. So, thank you for your time. I'll see you later.
Margot Rutter is our next speaker, and you will be followed by Roy Wiegand.
Hello, Council, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Staff. I am here as the Treasurer of the Burbank Tenants Rights Committee, a newly-formed, as Constantine mentioned. Again, we're looking to get that on the agenda so that we can look at a freeze, just in the preemptive move, in case people get really excited about this and want to do their own actions ahead of time. I would like to let everybody know that you can find us on Facebook. It's very rudimentary right now, it's very low-key, but we want to build on it, create some content, make sure that people know what this is for. Again, we want to put an ordinance on the November 2020 ballot so that we can have some semblance of rent control and just cause evictions. So, it's Burbank Tenants Rights Committee on Facebook, and we, if you have any questions, you can definitely ask anything there. We have a BurbankTenants@gmail email address. Again, it's BurbankTenants@gmail.com. And we are set up to take donations. We're going to need quite a bit of funding to get some professional signature gathers on door-knocking. So, we're definitely taking, we're able to take donations now, and we definitely need them. And, yeah, any questions can be directed to Facebook, again, or BurbankTenants@gmail. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Roy Wiegand is our next speaker, and you'll be followed by Mr. Mike Nolan.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Couple of things to jump through here. I hope to get a response to a few questions here. I did attend the FAA meeting last Wednesday evening, excuse me, Tuesday, I should know that, because that's when council was. I would hope in the future that we can coordinate as a council, and I know you can't speak for the FAA or the Airport Authority, but if there's any way of waving the flag to them that it puts an onus on people who try to keep abreast of what's happening in Burbank to make a choice, having to make a choice between a very rare FAA meeting where they're, actually, you can meet people from the FAA, and a City Council meeting, you might have something you want to say here too, or learn about. That's a tough one. So if you could bridge that gap, there seems to be a breakdown in communication between all the parties involved. Speaking of the FAA meetings, there are six coming up that have to do with the terminal. Mayor, you mentioned, back in November, you asked one of the Airport Authority members from Burbank to ask the FAA, the format going forward, if we get a more of a Q&amp;A session, sessions with those meetings instead of the charrettes, or as a lot of people who go to them call them dog and pony shows, where you're wandering around and you're passed off from one board and speaker to another, and you never really get answers, if you ever, I have found, particular answers to particular questions there. It's well-intentioned, but I do find the Q&amp;A sessions and most of the people that are really watching this stuff appreciate that. So I don't know if you ever heard back from the Airport Authority on that? That was back in November, you did ask, requested that. Also, I went to the Airport Authority meeting yesterday, there is no group email. I don't know if you know that. I can't find one, nobody I know has one, to reach all the board, board members of the authority members with one email. We like that about the council, we can send one quick one, it reaches all of you, and that's a great thing. I did ask about it yesterday and was told, well, you can email me at Glendale City Council. And then, somebody did say there's something called Answers Answers on the website, but you have to write in there that you want it to go to all, it's unnecessary steps, I think. I would request that you pursue that, if you could, with the authority to make that easier going forward. Speaking of, two more things with the airport, we would appreciate the people that are watching what's going on there, and I think anybody in the city would, we used to have an airport commissioner report every meeting. Now it's very occasional, comparatively. So, again, that would be a nice thing to have every week. And then also, notice on the Avion Tour that I found out about last May, that's the big project north of the terminal. There was very little, if any, public notice given on that. Somebody from the Plenty, boy, I went to it, it was on a Saturday morning, found out about about half hour before, there was nobody from the public there besides my wife and I, we had time, so we popped up there. It was good to be there, but anyway, public notice on that would have been much appreciated. Thank you.
Our last speaker at this moment is Mr. Mike Nolan. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, members, Council. First of all, I, I want to let you know, Madam Mayor, that I appreciated being able to, I couldn't go with raining too much, but I... that I appreciated being able to, I couldn't go with raining too much, but I appreciated Roy mentioning and reminding them that you had asked for a Q&amp;A, because this will have quite an impact, the airport activities, on Burbank residents in particular. Of note, I think, to all five of you, would be that when Mr. Wiegand spoke about the conflict, or the inherent conflict, between the FAA having their meeting on the same night as your meeting, the Glendale council members concurred that their meeting is on Tuesday also. So that's two cities out of three, and I compliment Mr. Wiegand for bringing it up, but I'm glad that the Glendale commissioners spoke up. He also mentioned to you, we used to get the airport commissioner reports, and it was on the agenda, and along with it, afforded you, because it was on the agenda, afforded you the opportunity here at the council where people are watching to see what their elected officials feel, and it's no longer happening. Could you discuss and see about bringing it back, an airport authority commissioner report? Because I don't, I don't even know who the liaison is anymore. We've got a lot of activity going on out there that's going to have an impact on many, many people in Burbank, and yet, the communication has never been this poor from the Airport Authority. As a matter of fact, there was a time when we had council members on the Airport Authority, like Glendale and Pasadena do. So would you please look into that? Also, I want to compliment the Burbank Police Department and the Fire Department for how they handle things over the last few days. Some of you may have seen the picture in the daily news of Virginia McKinney being helped out of Ranville that was stuck in the mud. Many of us have known that lady for a long, long time, and I think that picture says more than 1,000 words. That's kind of trite, but I really find it interesting that Councilman Murphy wanted to look into the smoke coming out of a chimney in Burbank, when our code required people to have fireplaces and chimneys for years. And, to me, the service, service we receive in Burbank, whether it's on Country Club Drive, or at the flooded intersection, from our police and fire personnel, has been outstanding, and I would hope that you could recognize that level of professionalism which we've come to expect here in Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card I have is for Dave Perrelli, so if there are any additional speakers, would you please fill out a card at this time? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. You know, it was brought up about the airport meeting, the FAA meeting at the Buena Vista Library last week on Tuesday night, and it'll come as no surprise to you that unless I'm sick, there is no other event in Burbank on Tuesday nights other than the council meeting. And so, obviously, I was not, when I heard about it on Monday, going to the Buena Vista Library. I guess I was probably one of the early people, as far as this goes, to say, why, in my own mind, why on earth is this being scheduled on a Tuesday night at the same time as a council meeting, and basically at the same time as a Glendale council meeting, and it's Glendale, Burbank, and Pasadena, I would think we would know Tuesday night is not a good night. But we didn't. And then, I was not certain, because I had to hear afterwards, but I suspected it would be charrettes again, and I generally try to avoid charrettes, like the plague, because all it does is raise my blood pressure. And the reason it raises my blood pressure, instead of one person asking a question one time and everyone hears the answer, what you end up with at a charrette is 50 people asking the same question and not hearing the answer any of the other 50 got, which to me is so counterproductive to holding any kind of meeting at all. But that's what they did. And I too, I'm glad Mr. Wiegand was able to go to it, although I got to say, how could you choose that over a council meeting? I'm sure he'll laugh about that. Mr. Wiegand brought up something else, and I have had a hard time understanding this since we did it. We used to, he's correct, have an airport commissioner report on our council agenda after every airport meeting. We had that for years, and the reason we had it, to my recollection, was the council actually took an action and voted that that was to be on the agenda. So when it first disappeared, I was questioning in my mind, why did it just disappear? The best I could find out was Mark Scott had decided it was just time-consuming and not worth it. However, because I had in my mind that council had taken an action and actually voted to do it, I talked to two council members, prior council members from the 1990s when we did that, and I asked them, didn't you or did you not take a vote? Both of them said to me, yes, we took a vote. So I think somewhere is an official council vote, which we never took a new vote not to do it, that we have the airport commissioner reports, and they automatically are on the agenda after an airport meeting. I too think we need to go back to that, and it puzzled me why, when we were coming up with assurances and Measure B votes and all this, we would decide to get rid of that. It seemed counterproductive.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. If I may, Council, I'd just like to let the speakers know who asked about the Airport Authority meeting, that I'll look into that, and I'll ask the City Manager to see if we had, if there's been a passed council vote on having it once a month. I will say that it's gone to a quarterly basis, so we have had reports, I know Mr. Wiggins has been here, and other commissioners have joined him, but it certainly has not been once a month. So let's establish the first basis, is there a council policy that it's once a month or not? And if I may, Council, secondly, just a word about the meeting that was held last Tuesday while the council was meeting. This meeting was run and set by the Federal Aviation Administration. They did, they are preparing an environmental impact statement consistent with the National Environmental Protection Act, and that meeting was about that particular issue and no other issue. Now, can we educate them? I hope so, but it was a meeting that was established, set, and advertised by the Federal Administration, and it was not set by the council, nor was it set by the Airport Authority. So I'd like the community to be aware of that very clear but important distinction. Secondly, you raised the design charrettes. Those are being conducted by consultants to the Airport Authority, so that is a local effort, and I'll be happy to look into the format and talk with the staff about the format on that. So I want to thank you. My other comments, I'll hold until I hear the rest of council, so.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Telemontes.
Before we get into responding to public comment, I'd like to ask Mr. Davis if we could have somebody from staff come up and just give us a Reader's Digest version of what a scoping meeting is about, or what it entails, especially the one, obviously, we've gotten a lot of emails over the scoping meeting that we didn't have a representation there, council wasn't there, speaking on the resident's behalf, so just kind of get an idea of what a scoping meeting is really about.
We can certainly do that. Let's be clear, as the mayor said, this is a scoping meeting about an EIR, not about the new airport terminal. It's the scope of that EIR, that's all. That's all. It's not designing a terminal or anything close to it. It's their environmental impact report scope, that's it. But we're going to have our staff come up, and they did coordinate with your staff and had a meeting with your staff as agency to agency, and we commented extensively. So we were represented by your staff at that meeting with the FAA, in a different meeting, but nonetheless with the FAA. We can have staff come up and talk more about it.
Thank you.
I'm going to suggest, and this seems like I'm really picky, but this is an environmental impact statement prepared at the federal level and not an environmental impact report, which was completed at the state level. It's confusing enough, but, Mr. Prescott, can you please explain and answer Mr. Telemontes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Department. The scoping meeting is part of the environmental impact statement, EIS process, required by NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, that the FAA is required to go through to review potential environmental impacts of the proposed new terminal. The scoping meeting is, describes the action that they're taking, which is to build a terminal, possible alternatives, and then the agency, FAA, seeks input from other agencies, as they did organizations and the public, on potentially affected resources, environmental issues to be considered, and the agency's planned approach to analysis. So what it is, is what are we analyzing? Are we analyzing everything we need to? What is the scope, hence scoping meeting? What is the scope of our analysis? Then they'll begin the environmental process, and that really is when the public can weigh in and kind of look at the analysis that's been done for the terminal. As you mentioned, the charrettes, the design charrettes are a separate process, they're required by the development agreement between the city and the Airport Authority, and those will be underway hopefully spring this year. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, because I was confused as well, you know, getting all these emails. I know some blogs are talking about it and thinking, what's the right answer? So thank you for that.
You're welcome. The SEQA process is the EIR process, they've done the state process, now they have to do the federal process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Murphy.
Mr. Prescott, will we get to see your comments? Will the public get to see your comments? I don't mean yours personally, but apparently, City Manager said that we've commented extensively, and I know I haven't commented yet.
Oh, on the EIS, we haven't, the EIS hasn't been prepared yet, we haven't commented, but we've commented on the SEQA document, the EIR process. That's, that's part of the public record already.
Will we get to see that soon?
Well, yeah, that's, we can provide that to you. It was, it was part of the approval of the airport, the terminal, for the Measure B vote. The SEQA's already been done. I think that's what Mr. Davis may have been referring to, so we will likely comment on the EIS as well.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Councilmember Telemontes, do you want to continue in your response to comments?
I want to thank the members of the public that showed up tonight to voice their concerns and suggestions. Thank you for coming.
Councilmember Frutos.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming down this evening and letting us hear what your thoughts are. Mr. Wiegand, I definitely followed up on your wife's email with Mr. Miller to get to the bottom of it, and I sent her an email, basically, that the meeting was set up by the FAA and nothing to do with the Authority, but I am hearing you loud and clear about the frustration of not knowing. And, Mr. Nolan, sometimes you can be really hard on us, but this time here, thank you so much for your compliment to our police and firefighters, but thank you for acknowledging them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Murphy.
Yes, I also recently asked a question of staff, do our commissioners have emails? I didn't get a response, I'm not concerned about that. I know I asked too many questions, and that's okay, but I did ask Bill Wiggins directly if the email that I was writing to him was public or private, and he said it was private. I would be reluctant to give that out, although it would be nice for the public to be able to talk to their commissioners about the airport and the concerns that they have. I didn't even think about Glendale and Pasadena, but is it possible that we can talk to the Airport Authority and ask them to provide some kind of communication?
Absolutely. I can't explain why they don't do that now, but I have it on my to-do list to meet with Mr. Miller, and this will be on the agenda. It's ridiculous, it doesn't already exist.
Okay, then someone's also going to ask whoever the FAA is not to do any kind of a meeting concerning the airport, just because of the lack of trust or the concern that the council could attend?
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're saying. Could you try again?
Okay, well, they're all talking about the scoping meeting, and I understand that we didn't have to be there, but the fact that the FAA is scheduling meetings the same night as our meeting and the same night as Glendale's meeting is of concern. Is it possible that we can communicate with someone and ask them, please don't do that again?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't speak English well sometimes. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Springer.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you, Mr. Nolan, for your shout-out to the Burbank Police and Fire, I agree. And I did attend the afternoon, the Tuesday afternoon EIS scoping session with the FAA, and Ms. McFarland was also there, and I shared the information via email to everybody, I think, I think I covered everybody. I shared the information that I received there, so I couldn't, of course, go to the Tuesday night meeting, but you were there, and can compare if I got something that Ms. McFarland and I received, something that you didn't. So you should have everything, I think, from that EIS scoping. And, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming and speaking this evening. We appreciate you taking the time out and to join us, and I hear loud and clear from Mr. Davis that we'll have some follow-up to do on some of the issues that were raised this evening. We're at item J for the evening, it's the consent calendar, which may be enacted in one motion. I'd like to call upon our Assistant City Clerk to please read the consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, the first item is a second reading and adoption of the amended Conflict of Interest Code, and the second item is the second reading and adoption of Development Agreement Amendment for 610 through 632 North Hollywood Way and 3601 West Verdugo Avenue, PD 88-2 and 99-1.
Would someone like to move? Councilmember Murphy, you moved?
Yes, second.
Frutos, you seconded? You don't have to move again. I want council to know that I've read this information, so I am prepared to take a vote tonight on the second readings. So would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Telemontes? Vice Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Gabe Letty?
Yes, and the consent calendar is adopted unanimously. We're at item K3, and it's a reminder to those of you who may have just tuned in that this item has been removed from the agenda at the request of the organizers of the event. Therefore, our first report to council this evening will be the item four. Item number four is the housing presentation, setting a proactive housing goal. It will be conducted by the Community Development Department. After staff's presentation, the council will proceed with public comment. Speakers will have three minutes to speak on the item at the conclusion of oral presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first period of public comment. Good evening, Ms. McFarland.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I am happy to be here tonight. I'm wearing my red for Chinese New Year's, so congratulations for the new year. And I have a presentation tonight for you, talking about housing. Great. And as we talk about housing, we often talk about in terms of building neighborhoods. The council has expressed that this is a priority, and you've told us that you don't want to just build unit, you want to look at the larger picture and be strategic in our planning, strategies, and overall policies. For this reason, when reviewing development projects, staff often looks and conveys council's objectives to developers, and integrates public amenities into our development requirements, as well as considering surrounding infrastructure and existing development to ensure that such things such as walkability, environmental concerns, and service retail offerings are incorporated. This, in effect, creates a better neighborhood and in turn, improved quality of life for our current and future residents. Additionally, City Council has mandated that we protect our existing Additionally, City Council has mandated that we protect our existing single-family residents. As you will hear tonight, all of this is at stake if we don't approve and develop additional housing. To this end, a reasonable plan with number of units, timeframes, and focused location for future development is imperative for our city, not only for planning purposes, but because, as you will hear tonight, our local control is very much at stake. Governor Newsom, our state's Congress and California Housing and Community Development, or HCD, department, is becoming more and more aggressive in their goal-setting, their regulations, requirements, and enforcement. The state's already done this on accessory dwelling units, and that is just a part of what we will see in the future. At his budget conference in January, Governor Newsom unveiled that he has more than $2 million in funding for housing and homeless initiatives. He also pledged to revamp the housing supply goals by setting our new Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers, or RENA numbers, and is sticking to his campaign pledge of 3.5 million new homes in the next seven years. The governor also said that his administration would develop new home-building targets for every region and, for the first time, hold local governments not meeting those goals with financial penalties. He's proposing to withhold the state transportation revenue or state's gas tax from those who don't comply. And a few weeks ago, the state filed a lawsuit against Huntington Beach for their housing element and also for downsizing their zoning. It's important to realize that Huntington Beach has 50% of their population is rent burdened, and when you look at Burbank, 46% of ours is rent burden. Forty-six percent. So we're very similar, except for the beach. When that earthquake happens, we will have the beach. So tonight's presentation by staff follows our last housing goals presentation on October 31st of last year. During this time, council had a variety of questions, ranging from what other cities are doing to the effects of schools, green development, and the mix of housing, such as the development housing types and the levels of affordability. These are all valid questions and concerns. Tonight, we'll begin that process of addressing these questions in the presentation, as well as providing further information in the form of the next steps of the process. At the end of this presentation, staff requests that City Council set a targeted goal number, as to the number of units the city would like to build during the next 15 years and in terms of the housing-to-jobs ratio. In this way, we can create a goal ratio that will provide an appropriate amount of housing units that are more in line with our housing numbers as they change. I'm sorry, our job numbers as they change. One effect that this will have is to reduce the number of vehicle miles traveled as we were proposing the new units be built along, in close proximity, I hate that word, to major employment centers and transit facilities. If the council selects a housing goal number, then the resulting housing-to-jobs ratio will provide policy direction to staff to work towards ensuring that, at a minimum, we don't further increase the housing-to-jobs imbalance. As we previously discussed, it's staff's assessment that setting a housing goal is now imperative even more than ever, because it will take approximately 15 years to implement our plan. Furthermore, without a long-term plan, the jobs-to-housing imbalance may get worse, and this will have a direct effect on our city's ability to retain jobs and our community's quality of life. Currently, Burbank has 3.5 jobs-to-housing ratio. What this means is for every three-point jobs we have in the city, we have one housing unit. Two people have to drive, 2.5 people have to drive in. And this is much higher than our surrounding cities and even those in the Bay Area. This number means that 128,000 people drive into Burbank each day for work. They fight the gridlock, they clog our local streets as they make the commute into town. And that happens particularly in the media district, the downtown and the airport area where our jobs are located. In the long run, we can simply not sustain the current business economic growth along with maintaining our competitive edge, as we are the hub for entertainment. These companies now make us the media capital of the world. Our jobs-to-housing balance is extreme, and the quality of life for our workers is at risk as housing prices continue to climb and communities continue to increase. This will also have a direct effect on existing residents in single-family neighborhoods as they're located in and around our major employment centers. They will also receive the greater traffic congestion, the impact on city infrastructure, and the loss of the employment base, while employees will seek other regions with a greater quality of life. As you've heard before, the state has been very vocal in identifying production and availability of the housing as a statewide concern. Furthermore, the state has shown a willingness to pass new housing legislation that seeks to facilitate more housing production, even at the expense of local control. It's anticipated that if we do not build, the state, and in particular HCD, will force the local jurisdictions such as Burbank, with a strong employment base and a poor record of housing productions, to build its fair share of housing via their state mandates. This will be done through future legislation, direct intervention, and through our housing element via the Attorney General's Office for Noncompliance. In September, Governor Brown signed SB 828. The bill has the following objectives: to increase the housing supply and mix of housing affordability in an equitable manner; and each jurisdiction will receive an allocation goal for units low and very low-income households and moderate. The second objective is to promote infill development and social-economic equality, protect the environment and agricultural resources, along with encouraging efficient development patterns, and reducing greenhouse gases; improving the jobs-to-housing balance between the numbers of low-wage jobs and the number of housing units affordable for demographics in each jurisdiction; and lastly, allocating a lower proportion of housing needs in the income categories based on the community demographics. So what this means is, in other words, is they will set RENA numbers in relationship to our income categories and our jobs. So what does this mean? Our goal number will likely go up. SB 50 is another example of the state's actions toward continuing their desires to facilitate development and local control. Since we last met on December 3rd, Senator Scott Wiener introduced SB 50, which, like his previously-defeated bill, if approved, would prevent cities like ours from restricting high-density housing within a half-mile of rail and a quarter-mile within frequently-used bus lines. So basically, this would apply to the entire city of Burbank. This new bill adds additional prevention of restrictions near job-rich areas, again Burbank. The bill offers developer waivers on density and parking, and we've already had an example of state intervention in local jurisdiction with our accessory dwelling units and the state mandates for by-right development. SB 4 is similar to SB 50, and it's still undergoing revisions. It's considered to be an alternative to SB 50 and an attempt to allow streamlined ministerial approval for qualified projects. It also includes additional incentives, but allows, it does not allow for an override of community, local community, to planning and discretionary processes. So SB 50 does not allow SEQUA exemptions, but SB 4 does, so long as the certain requirements are met. I should note that SB 4 is still undergoing revisions, and so we don't have a thorough examination of both bills until those revisions are completed, and then we'll bring you one. So in regards to the governor's plan, if the state were to allocate 3.5 million homes to be strictly built currently based on population figures, our fair share would be 9,559 units. So as we talk about a targeted number, it's normal to want to discuss all the possible what-ifs, how would this work, and get bogged down researching the issue further and further as a result of analyzing, and basically, we end up in analysis paralysis. We understand the need to create the most informed decision possible, but the constraints of ever-increasing jobs-to-housing imbalance, potential impacts to the city's economic growth and market competitiveness, along with the existing and looming state mandates, require that we act sooner than later. City councils made it clear that providing housing for all economic segments of the community and for our workers is a priority. The question before you, moving forward, is how do we plan the work? By determining the number of units that we should be working towards developing to improve the housing, the timeframe that is necessary to develop our envisioned housing, and identifying the most appropriate locations. So as council sets the plan, staff can begin to work the plan. This is similar to me going on a trip and knowing where I'm going and knowing how to pack my suitcase. I always want to know, when I'm planning a trip, I want to know where I'm going. Do I pack my swimsuit, or do I pack my parka? And so we're asking the council to basically do the same thing. Tell us where we're going so that we can pack the suitcase. And this is consistent with our approach and following our current and long-range planning that's underway. We're undergoing implementation of the city's Burbank 2035 general plan and our housing element goals. We have a proposed update of the Burbank Center Plan, in which metro grants have been, funds have been obtained for this project. And we're also halfway, halfway through, Fred, on the Golden State?
Third.
Third of the way on Golden State specific plan, which is underway but currently on hold due to staffing issues. Lastly, staff will be seeking future grants to offset the cost for the media district's specific plan, and this effort should begin in the next five to six years based on staffing and funding availability. Within the established housing goals and resulting jobs-to-housing ratio to guide council and staff, we can be able to flesh out the future next steps, basically working the plan. So, when should we build? By the end of October last year, staff suggested that the right time to build is now because of the lack of housing, high-market demand, and looming state intervention. Staff anticipates that it will take 15 years to undertake the long-term planning and ongoing implementation of the housing plan. The 15-year period allows the city to begin to proactively address the housing production shortfall while providing future long-range planning efforts that coincide with the upcoming regional needs assessment, our RENA allocation process in 2020, and the general plan housing element in 2021. Both the RENA and the housing elements updates are eight-year planning efforts, and it is anticipated that during the next 15-year period, the city's housing plan time will undertake two cycles of the RENA and the housing element updates as required by state So next, where should we build? Staff's assessment suggests that the appropriate location for new development is along our high-transit corridors, primarily within our downtown Burbank area, the airport district, Golden State specific plan area, and to some extent, the infill development within the media district. So let's look at how many units can Burbank sustain. Increasing our quality of life while still protecting our city's established single-family neighborhoods. And Fred Ramirez, our Assistant Community Development Director in Planning, is going to talk about this section.
Thank you, Simone, Mayor, members of the council. As Simone mentioned, we've thrown out some numbers as far as housing goals, and just wanted to give a bit of context. So the Burbank general plan, if I can have the presentation up. The Burbank general plan, adopted back in 2013, projects out towards 2035. The city anticipated at the time pretty incremental intensification of land uses with a relatively modest increase in dwelling units and population within the community. The development focused historically on underutilized land in the downtown Burbank, downtown Burbank area, the media district, as well as the Golden State area as potential opportunity areas for development. And we're following that kind of objective to look at the I-5 corridor as a potential opportunity site. The premise when the general plan was adopted was for residential opportunities to be limited, both by prior city policies related to residential growth management, which is the Measure 1 that is noted in the staff report, which projected housing demand and availability of vacant and underutilized land to basically determine the maximum ceiling of housing that could be built. The Burbank 2035 and Measure 1 estimated housing build-out potentials that range from 5,900 units up to 19,395 units. So the lower end of that unit count was based on some projected opportunity sites and availability. The overall top ceilings, both for the general plan as well as Measure 1, are based on land use, the land use element that was previously approved back in 1989, where it looked at both the yield of housing as well as the capacity to be able to support that with infrastructure. So both numbers are, the 17 under the general plan as well as in Measure 1, are well above anything that we're proposing as a housing goal during that same planning period. So we want to make sure that you're aware that we understand that housing goes in line with infrastructure, so even the units that we're proposing are well within the capacity that's available to serve those particular new housing units. So as far as the general plan, looking back in 2013, things that have changed or have kind of been added to the equation that maybe weren't considered as in-depth based on conditions that are now in effect now, and that is, as previously noted, the forecasting assumptions at the time when the Burbank 2035 was put into place tried to project but did not take into account actual growth demand attributed to the increased jobs, the limited existing housing supply locally, as well as the increased regional housing demand, as well as what we've seen an increase in price and market demand, as well as regional demand to integrate transit with housing. That's happened most recently, and the RENA numbers that Simone noted actually, at a regional level, SCAG is looking at how housing works hand-in-hand with transportation to be able to facilitate and reduce, as she noted, vehicle miles traveled by putting housing near transit. The, as far as the state mandate, as she noted, one of the other things that's become more prevalent of late is the state following up, whether it be through the development of mandates for ADUs, which are by right now in single-family and have produced over 200 units since you all approved those regulations, as well as other provisions with new housing bills that took effect in 2017 that focus on identifying cities that haven't built their fair share, and depending on how much has been built, identifying certain locations where near transit you can propose by-right projects. In addition to that, they've made updates to density bonus law, as well as inclusionary regulations. So back in the day, you may remember, we have had projects that have come forward during the timeframe when the Palmer case or a case that basically limited the ability to include a certain requirement that we had on our books for housing units. That's no longer in effect. We now can require inclusionary units through that process. So collectively, the state is kind of looking at ways to facilitate development of housing at a statewide level, and what that means to the community is that a lot more is being done to basically try to make projects by-right projects, and in doing so, that's resulting in also some of the loss of local control. As Simone mentioned, the areas that we're looking at, understanding that one of the things over the last two years that I've worked here and the planning effort has been to facilitate responsible development, and in doing so, really be careful that we protect the And in doing so, really be careful that we protect the single-family residential neighborhoods and focus development in areas where we have a lot of transit availability and we have basically the ability to bring infrastructure to it to support that type of higher density development. In particular, this area along the I-5 corridor, it kind of looks like a bow tie, creates great opportunities. In particular, it's kind of hemmed in by roadways as well as major street corridors that protect it from or protect the single family from those areas of development. We're not displacing housing in those areas. So there's great opportunities to consider both in the airport district, what we're calling the Golden State specific plan, as well as opportunities in the Burbank Center Plan, both through the proposed updates to both plans, as well as looking at some possible infill sites in the media district. You have a project like Talaria, that's an info project next to the studios. There may be other opportunities to do info sites there. And that's something that we'll be looking at in the long term. So when we looked at the projected and proposed build outs, one of the things, as mentioned before, the Burbank 2035 estimated limited growth and under the estimated aforementioned growth factors previously noted in the estimated build out, they were anticipating that 5,900 units could be built based on the availability of land. One of the things that that doesn't take into account are properties like the 77 Front Street site, the mall, as well as the potential for new housing to go into the airport district. So looking at that now with a development potential that's in those areas, that creates new opportunities to try to meet those RENA numbers that Simone noted, both currently, because we've built, and I'll go to that slide and show you the amount that we've built as well as what we anticipate to get in the next cycle, which is the next eight-year cycle that starts in 2021. And then there'll be another cycle in 2028. And towards the end of the general plan, we'll have a third cycle of RENA. And it's anticipated that I think the state is looking at rolling over those unbuilt RENA numbers into the next cycle. And I think that's still in the consideration. So we kind of have to plan ahead anticipating that that might be the case. In the past, you would come up with a number. And if you didn't meet it, you just wipe the slate clean with the next RENA number. That's not the case. And I think that's something that's, if I was betting on it, I anticipate that that's going to be something that's going to be high priority for the state to get cities to build out that housing. So in particular, if we look just as an example at the current RENA number, as I mentioned before, all the different bullet points there really look at what the existing conditions on the ground are. We have a number of 2684 as our RENA number over this eight-year period, which started in 2013. So we are now in 2018, we're five years going into six years in. And we have basically two more years of buildup potential. And that's the remaining yet to be built, the 2361. So what does that mean? On your, hopefully, the slide you can see it, I know because it's a backdrop of white on text. Effectively, what we've done is over this time period, we've built 323 units. 11 of them are affordable and 312 are market rate. And that's the remaining balance that was noted on the prior page of 23. The 2361. So if you look at it as far as what we've built, we have not built low, very low in mod income units. We've predominantly built market rate units with a handful of affordable. What does that mean? That means that what's actually reported on that particular annual report are those projects that have gotten building permits. So I know you'll say, well, last, you know, last year we built, we approved First Street Village. First Street Village includes 261 market rate units as well as 14 deed restricted moderate income units. Well, as soon as we're done plan checking it and they start construction and we issue building permits, then we can now identify those as new units. But those are coming online, anticipated building permits probably in about the next six to seven months. So once they actually pull a building permit, they'll be noted on the annual report. So yes, it will add to the units, but we're far away from reaching the RENA number that's on the books. We are looking at other development projects and Simone will probably talk a little bit more about this, where even planned developments that are coming for it, coming before you, we are considering a higher number of units, percentages that would be deed restricted as affordable. And we've had a handful of density bonus projects, projects that have come in where the developer has requested an increase in density and they've provided a certain number of deed restricted low income units for the request of what she mentioned were incentives and concessions or deviations from development standards. So what does that mean? It means that they can ask for modifications to the maximum building height setbacks, open space and parking requirements, to name a few. So they can ask for deviations or variances, I hate to use the word, but deviation from the city's established standards if they can do twofold. A certain set require it to prove it up with a pro forma to show how it's, if they don't get those deviations, it'll impact them for to be able to build it, finance it. And on the other side, you've got things like waivers where you show that if it's a physical impediment to building the affordability, then you can request a waiver. So that's nuanced, but that's just an example of some of the projects that have come in through an infill project. Those are all still in review. They've been approved, some have been approved. Some are still in the process of review, but they haven't been issued building permits. Hence, they don't show up on your list of annual reporting that we do in April. So as mentioned before, I, before we continue to the RENA discussion, needed just a couple of caveats regarding the number and the math. In calculating our possible RENA numbers, we assume that any current RENA number that we did not meet would be rolled over. This could happen. And the other thing we did, and we basically were conservatives, we just assumed that we would keep the same RENA number total for the new cycle, which we're undercounting. I mean, I anticipate because of the fact that we have a lot more jobs than we have housing and because we are basically a jobs-rich and housing-poor community and an employment center that we're going to be looked at and scrutinized heavily. And we're probably going to get more units allocated to us to build in the next eight years. And I anticipate that that's probably going to be the case in the next eight years and the one subsequent. So we're probably undercounting what our obligation will be over time over the 15-year period, but we wanted to just use that number since you'd be familiar with what it was. Consistent with density bonus law, you know, as far as the affordability, depending on what's used, it's between 15 to 20 affordable units that we built for every 100 in dwelling units. So when you look at the 12,000, I believe that's what we were focusing on, was when you said, well, how did you come up with the 12? Well, we looked at for every 100, if we were getting 50 to 20 of those to be deed restricted affordable, what would that mean on that build out? So the 12,000 units with a lot of, you know, depending on what happens with some of these planned developments coming forward, we may be able to meet more of our affordability units earlier on in the process. So the 12,000 is really not like a hard number in the sense of we're going to build 12,000. It's a goal to try to achieve, but in the process of doing that, it helps us, as we say, load up our luggage case with the right tools. So when we go on our trip to 12,000, we can look at, well, are we going to do it with inclusionary? Are we going to facilitate a density bonus? Are we going to be looking at some homeownership opportunities through small lot subdivisions, you know, looking at that process and looking at how we facilitate condo projects potentially as other options? Or the missing middle, which are smaller infill projects in areas? So, so by knowing kind of where we want to go as a, as a, as a city, then we can kind of start focusing on the different types of programs and policies that need to be put in place to help us work the plan that you all are looking at developing here tonight through determining a goal. And I think with that, turn it over to you. I probably went a little bit beyond that, but.
We're a good team. So I'm just going to add on to this slide that you're looking at right now. And this, these numbers here that you see in front of you are for only a two-year period cycle. So it is based on the cycle that we're currently in and the next year cycle. So the 2021, 2029. So this is a 10-year estimate, not a 15-year estimate, which is what we're asking you to do. So this number is going to be lower than our 15-year estimate. When you look at these numbers based on our current RENA projections and you take a 12% inclusionary number, if we were to meet our RENA numbers, we would actually have to buy, build 44,000 units within the city in that 10-year period to meet the next two RENA cycles. Okay, so let me see where I am. So there, there is some good news and that we've already have a number of projects in the queue. And as Fred indicated, some of our accessory dwelling units will count towards our inclusionary goal numbers. So currently, we have seven projects in process, either going through the entitlement process or just proposed at this point. And if they were to all move forward within the next 10 years, the resulting units would be 2,254 units. Those are the number that you see in the blue on the diagram on your left. 257 of these would be affordable based on the 12% inclusionary. So you see that number in blue on the right-hand side. And then additionally, if we use the average amount of accessory dwelling unit applications currently being submitted, the number is a little bit more than 10 per month. So if this rate continues, we project that there will be about 1,900 units built and 48% of these, around 48% of these would qualify towards our RENA numbers. So that's a total of 912 units and that's the orange number that you see on the right. So this would give us a total of 1,169 affordable units and a total of 4154 units. So if we use these RENA numbers as our guide and taking into consideration possible new developments and a 12% inclusionary number, if we approved all seven projects, which I'm not indicating that we should, but if we did, we would still need to build about 4199 additional affordable units and 30,000 overall units. It's quite a bit. So now let's look at these numbers in context to our jobs to housing ratio chart that we presented to you last time. If the goal was set at 12,000 units and assuming no new job growth, which we know will not happen, but just so that we can come up with a number, the new ratio would be 2.57. So this is an average of one employee living in Burbank while 1.57 employees have to commute to town and a reduction of vehicle miles traveled. If we focus on improving our transit systems, at the same time, we can add the reduction of cars driving in and out of Burbank each day. And the resulting number gets us closer to the top pink line, which is the objective line. So what would 12,000 units look like in Burbank? Well, that's approximately an increase of 25%. We're actually at 27, but 25 is pretty close. And it's in line with the governor's plan to increase the housing by 25%. So recently, there was an article printed in the Bay City Beacon that had pretty good graphics and we thought they might help you to kind of visualize what 25% would look like. So in this slide, we depict a neighborhood of 1,400 homes. And the addition of 250 units, which is 25%, could be built in one six-story apartment building. And this is kind of what it would look like. A more traditional approach and what we're proposing is more like what this slide would look like, which would be adding 350 units and including the ADUs infill development and some larger buildings towards near transit. So these slides kind of give you a sense of what the scenario could look like over the next 15 years. So how do we ensure responsible development? We've said that protecting our single-family homes is the biggest mandate that we have in the number one consideration. So our, our responsible development, if we use those as our guiding principles, we look at each project and we say, does it protect and respect the existing residential neighborhoods? Does it provide for a range of housing and job opportunities? Does it focus on mixed use and higher density development? That's in included in an environmental, sustainable manner? That, and is it within the city's primarily commercial employment and transit districts? And also, does it create vibrant neighborhoods? We want to make sure that we create those neighborhoods. And one of our concerns with the state mandates is if they come in and tell us how to develop, that we don't create neighborhoods. They create projects and projects get approved, not neighborhoods. So that's one of our biggest concerns. And then also, does it promote long-term economic resilience to maintain, maintain higher levels of city services? All of these things we should continue to use as we evaluate projects. So how do we use this information and where should we go from here? Well, we can go back to our primary premise of planning the work and then working the plan. Tonight, if the city council selects a housing goal ratio that will provide staff with policy direction to keep moving. And in fact, we haven't stopped. As we said, we're already working on things that you've asked us for, the density bonus inclusionary update policy that will set the regulations and requirements for inclusionary housing and determine our housing mix will be coming to you in the future, the near future. We're also going to talk about transfer development rights. So we'll be able to affect development in specific areas. And Fred's going to bring that forward to you also. We're working on the specific plans, which are underway and, and some are in already going, which is the Golden State specific plan, which I told you is on hold, but a third of the way done. The Burbank Center Plan Update, which we have refunding for. And then the media specific plan, media district specific plan that we need to do in the next five to six years. Lastly, we're also proactively starting to look at development partners for those people that can help us build P3s within the city. So staff's recommended goal is to help avoid the potential of loss of control by setting the following goals numbers. 12,000 units, which currently translates to a job and housing ratio of 2.57 during the next 15 years to be primarily built upon the transit corridors in that bow tie area that we showed you on the maps. As Councilman Telemonte says, that change will either happen to us or we can control it. At this point, staff would be available for questions when we get to that section. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card. So we have one speaker at this time for our public comment. And that is Diana Coronado is our speaker. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Diana Coronado and I'm here on behalf of the Building Industry Association. We represent 1,200 companies who employ over 100,000 people, all affiliated with building and development. We're really encouraged by the plan that was presented tonight. I think that it's really prudent to be proactive in making sure that your region is developing housing. And it's not just a Burbank problem. It's not just a Southern California problem. It's an entire California state problem that we're not meeting our housing goals. We want to come here to basically let you know that the BIA is here as a resource. We want to work with you and your staff on developing strategies and methodologies as you consider this plan. We did send correspondence today in a form of a letter. We outlined about four different points in order to encourage those methodologies and strategies in achieving your goals. Some of those include specified streamlined operations and processes, reduced fees and appropriate zoning as you look through your specific plans. I want to thank you for your time and I will be here to answer any questions and here to talk with staff as well. We're especially interested in the fact that you're thinking about all different economic levels and thinking about voluntary perhaps, not just mandated ways to meet your housing goals. We need certainty for developers and we look forward to helping you reach those goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, this is the time for your questions of staff on the report this evening. Shall I begin? I, I sent the staff a series of thoughts this afternoon, having read the reports. And I must confess, the attachment, the analysis that was done by Emmanuel Jones of SB 50, I got completely bogged down in. And it, it is out there already. The Beal bill, I don't believe, has been introduced formally yet.
No, I don't believe so. They're still redlining it last I looked.
Right. So, so without getting into the weeds on both of these bills, I, I wanted to, the staff answered one of the questions I had. The staff answered one of the questions I had, and that was, why the number of 12,000? And I think Mr. Ramirez in his presentation just basically got to the heart of that. So I was glad to see that there is a relationship between what we think are the achievable affordable units versus the goal of market-rate units. I wondered if the staff could tell me what the... Tell the council what the aggregate acreage was of at least the two areas that we've been talking about primarily. So we have kind of an idea of how many, how much area in the city we're speaking of. And I'm just speaking of downtown and the Golden State.
Sure. And if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, I think, just so that we can answer the questions here, can we answer them from the seat?
I think it's fine. You're on television. I don't want you to not be, you know, viewable to our watching residents.
So as it relates, so in the Burbank Center Plan, we have approximately 500 acres. And in the Golden State Specific Plan, we're looking at 600 acres of land. The Burbank Center Plan may grow a bit because what we're looking at doing is actually incorporating the North San Fernando Specific Plan area into the Burbank Center Plan. So basically, from the I-5 freeway all the way to the southern terminus of the Burbank Center Plan, which is the city of Glendale, that would be one large planning area. So when we do the update to the Burbank Center Plan, it'll incorporate that. So I would anticipate it's probably another 100 acres or so into that. So 600 and 600 is a good ballpark number.
And I asked staff for this so we have kind of an idea of the order of magnitude of area, even though not getting into the weeds about what and where and what specifically should it be, at least gives a broad, a broader framework as to available acreage. You may have answered. My other questions were just in the details of SB 50. But since SB 50 is a ways away from becoming final, I think what I would ask council members as a follow-up with staff to give us an understanding of how SB 50 might force or mandate us to do things we don't... What effect it would have on the areas that we've identified or they've suggested we identify for future growth? I just wonder what SB 50 would do to the areas that we've identified. Do you have any idea?
I think, speaking in kind of in more general terms, the areas that you're looking at when it comes to the Golden State Airport District as well as the Burbank Center Plan, kind of the linchpin to us, the focal point is those transit centers. So what they're looking at is a potential for build-out to occur within that half-mile to quarter-mile radius. The way the Burbank Center Plan was developed, it actually looked at the same area and targeted as areas for higher development for residential. So we have different zoning classifications in the immediate vicinity of the half-mile distance of Burbank Center Plan. But what it would do is through this process, and Simone can probably add a little bit more to it, is would probably focus staff's review of individual projects that met that criteria and basically establish certain objective standards that have to be abided by. Once that happens, if that project meets that criteria, they would be by right projects. So we're in the right areas. We're looking at the right targeted areas for development when we talk about the I-5 corridor in the Burbank Center Plan and at the Airport District with the two transit locations when you look at the two metro link stations. That's where, in general terms, we're looking at higher-density residential to be facilitated. And they're near large employment centers. So that's something that's not atypical. You're seeing a lot more cities in California looking at putting a proximity between housing and employment centers to reduce vehicle miles traveled and trips outside the city as well.
I also have, but I think this may... I don't know whether it falls under this current discussion or not, but I had some follow-up requests that I wanted staff to look into, especially in light of SB 50. And it really had to do with whether or not we could... Whether or not state legislation could amend or change what I understand is a 10-year defects requirement that developers must carry when they build condominiums. And I was going to ask the staff if they could educate us on what that law is or the city attorney.
City attorney, I think, wants to.
Very briefly. That in construction defect world, it was called latent defects. So something you wouldn't notice on just inspection allowed a period up to 10 years to be able to sue under that because it doesn't come to light or it doesn't cause damage to property until much later. There are a whole bunch of court cases saying when you could bring things, when you couldn't. And I can send this out to council tomorrow. There is a... Last January, there was a court case by the California Supreme Court that made it very clear now, in a construction defect, including condominiums, unless they're when newly built. So I'm not talking about conversions, but for new construction, that a homeowner, unless there's breach of warranty, specific things that aren't covered by this, has to go through what's called the right to repair. And a whole legislative package was done in the early 2000s to try to deal with it. But in the ensuing, I would say, almost 15, 16 years, there was conflicting court cases on whether you had to abide by that or not. Last January, the California Supreme Court said, yes, you have to abide by that, meaning a homeowner, whether they own a condominium or a single-family home, it doesn't matter, has to follow the process of that law. So some of the concerns that you used to hear may not really be valid anymore, and it's working its way out. So that area of the law has changed dramatically in the past year because the California Supreme Court, what they said. And I can send you an article that's a legal analysis of it done by someone that does construction law. And I looked at their analysis. I looked at the court case, and I believe it to be true. The other thing is, is this has been a... The argument that California's laws and litigation against condominiums, you know, killed the condominium projects. There was, that's been something that's been banted around for a long time. In 2002, an independent group did a study looking at all different kinds of factors and couldn't conclude that construction litigation caused the... Caused or didn't cause housing shortages. But what they did say is something we talk about all the time, which is there are shortages for all the reasons we already know. Restrictions on land use, NIMBYism, and the list goes on. So those, I don't know, even though people say that, that there is actually any study that really shows that correlation between the construction defect law in California and the inability. There wasn't to build. And there was a time where insurance became very expensive. Getting construction loans for condominiums was difficult. I think I've heard anecdotally that much of that has changed. But the law itself, I would caution not going there and waiting to see the effects of that new Supreme Court decision and how that affects it. And like I said, I have an article that I'm happy to share with all of the council.
The reason I asked this question to begin with was I have been of the opinion that the construction defects law has killed developers' desires to build condominiums. And what I hear the city attorney is saying is at least the study that was done in 2002, 17 years ago, concluded that it was not a material factor in the reason why developers are not building condominiums. It's a pretty old study. I'd be interested in anything that's more recent.
Well, I tried to look for newer, and I couldn't. And I think what I really want to impart to council is that the laws that were done to counteract the construction defect was this, the right to repair. And that law wasn't used the way I think a lot of people expected it because it intervened in court cases. And it was the California Supreme Court that in 2018 said, no, homeowners, you have to follow this law. And that, it's almost like a lemon law. You have the right to repair. There has to be pre-litigation mediation. There's this whole litany of things that has to happen before you can file a suit. And it really does dispose of the 10-year sort of issue. So I think it's important, as I said, you know, I will be more than happy to... I will make sure that the city clerk gets a copy of it as well, that that law really changes the playing field now.
Well, I'd sure like to see it, and I want to also stay kind of vigilant on the side of it. If only because I think we would want to see for-sale housing built in our city in addition to the apartments that we recently approved, right? We approved the project on First Street, 275 apartment units. Well, fine, fine, but for-sale housing, can we get more of it? And are there things that mitigate against getting it? And was this one of them? The second question or observation I asked is, how can regulations make it easier for tenants themselves to convert an apartment building to a stock cooperative? Stock cooperatives are state law. I can't claim to know what the latest is about them. But I... And maybe the council would be interested, and maybe tenants would be interested, certainly in smaller projects. Is it fairly straightforward for tenants to actually purchase and manage their own building as a stock cooperative? Which means you own a share. You don't have a condominium, but you own a share based on the size of your unit. And so I don't know if the staff has any comment on that, if they've seen it, or the city attorney. Do I start talking to Mrs. Friedman and Mr. Portentino?
We... I think it's something we need to look into. I think it's one of the tools that can provide a different option for homeownership, just like lease-to-purchase. Maybe a scenario where someone can occupy a unit and maybe they build equity, and then eventually they're able to take that equity and apply it to it. We've heard of projects in LA and in other places where people have looked at that lease-to-purchase. I think it's just one of the multiple tools that provide opportunities for different ways of introducing people into the homeownership market. The other one that I think is really important, not to get off topic, but just the cost of land is... So the higher the cost of land, the more there is an interest to look at ways of facilitating affordability. So that usually starts, meaning that it starts pushing up the unit count. And the small-lot subdivision is one of those opportunities where, in the image that Simone showed, where it showed kind of a different mix of units in a neighborhood, where there may be opportunities where we could look at doing kind of like a planned unit development with small lots where they retain ownership. So it's basically like a mini subdivision. And we actually get away from the condo concern of the 10-year. It's basically immediate ownership. There may be people that can develop and working with certain financiers to even produce that lease-to-purchase. So they get in the unit, they build equity, and then they can apply the equity to buy the unit. So those are all things that I think are merited. We should look at how we introduce kind of a continuum of housing, both in the immediate, let's say it's homeless, transitional, to now you have a rental unit and you, you know, save money and you make your way kind of in the typical norm to homeownership. So if we can provide more options in that continuum from the kid living at home to eventually making the way to a rental unit to eventually a housing unit, I think we're in a better position to meet that goal. So if 12,000 is the housing goal, by all means, we're going to have to take a multi-pronged approach to try to get affordability, both for market sale and for rental.
Okay. And then the last question I had around this general topic of how do you promote ownership? I think the small-lot idea is a good one. I know that LA really messed up over the long term in implementing their small-lot. And I would urge the staff to stick to multifamily-zoned properties and not start bleeding into plan amendments and upzonings in single-family neighborhoods, especially since you have given, you know, the council's commitment to build it because we need to do it, but at the same time, affording protection and preservation for our single-family neighborhoods. Is it possible for a homeowners' association fee to be prorated based on income qualification?
Not that I'm aware of. I will say HOA fees typically deal with the maintenance. So it's kind of a, it's kind of, the more amenities you put into the project and the more maintenance you have, then the higher the HOA fee. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. We want to build neighborhoods. We put a lot of amenities in the project. And then the external, kind of the repercussion is now there's more cost to maintain all those amenities, and that's why the HOA number. So if we keep it very limited, then maybe that's a way to kind of drive down the cost for the HOA. But I think it's driven by the cost to all the amenities that are being provided that are shared services for all the people that are in the condo project or townhome project. So that's one way to keep it lower is reduce the amenities. But that kind of goes at the fact that when you tour a lot of these locations, you're, you know, captivated by all the amenities that allow for people to come together, the fire pits, the outdoor dining areas, the gyms. I mean, all the stuff that someone has to maintain. So it's kind of a trade-off. It's a, you know, it's a double-edged sword with the HOA fee.
It's probably worthy of a long discussion, but maybe not under this, under the circumstances we're considering these numbers. Well, let me stop there and see if council, guess, Councilmember Telemonte.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I was just thinking, when you were mentioning the HOA fees, it's kind of like maintaining the parks, maintaining the pools throughout the city, right? Or the gymnasiums that we have. Somebody's got to pay for them. Now, did you get a chance to look at the Building Industry Association letter or email?
We, I did. I looked at it real quickly before heading over here. Simone could probably, I think you've looked at it as well.
I just want to kind of, they have four bullet points, four statements that they made, and see how we can, the city can work with that or is it really, would be a challenge or would be easy to try and look at? For example, number one, appropriately zone land for housing production. And in those two 600-acre areas, we'll have to do more with one than the other. The Golden State versus uptown up here.
It's, I say, in general terms, it's doable. It all depends on where the council wants to allocate resources. So the Golden State Airport District Specific Plan is in its early stages, right? We're going to, it's going to come to you. We're going to get direction from you on kind of the general concept. And then we're going to go through a whole community, public outreach process and actually involve the community in creating a shared vision for what that district will be, including looking at housing, transportation, neighborhood amenities, the myriad of things that we do. The same thing with the Burbank Center Plan. We have a very good plan. It's from 1997. I think there was a lot of visionary things that were put in there, but it needs a refresh. And in particular, in both of those specific plans, we need to get down to the design standards for mixed-use places and having objective standards. Because what we're finding out is with a lot of the housing legislation, they're becoming a lot more specific on determining exactly objective standards that are being applied to projects and not being too kind of cloudy in talking about community character and the feel of the community. They're like, okay, what are the standards? What are the setbacks? What are the heights? How do we integrate design, specific design that is clear to the developer so that when they're designing their project, they're meeting those standards? So it's not kind of hit or miss or, you know, you go into a, you go into a meeting with staff and you're like, well, what exactly does the community want to see here? So it can be done, that first one, through the planning process.
So am I hearing you that we might have to consider a design review board?
Not a design review board. Design standards for mixed-use places, we would incorporate right into the project, the specific plan, so that staff can do it. So by the time it comes, if it has to go to a board or it's a development review, it's been addressed. It's not a guessing game of what exactly does this project have to be designed to?
Sure, it's always nice for a developer to come in knowing what the rules are.
Exactly.
Okay, number two, creating a certain streamlined entitlement development process.
We are all on board with that. I think when it comes to us currently, it is an issue just of demand and capacity. There is a lot of demand for housing projects to be moved through the entitlement process because we, the areas that we look at, a lot of them are planned developments. They are labor-intensive, staff time. And we are, in essence, working with them to develop and design a project using the Neighborhoods Community Checklist that we worked on. using the Neighborhoods Community Checklist that we worked on for First Street. So it's a lot more time. I would say if the specific plans were approved, and all the objective standards were in place, and the council agrees that projects could potentially be approved administratively and/or with the board, that could help streamline that process. But it's going to be a discussion with the elected officials, the planning board, and the community, once we get those specific plans updated. I think once we do that, this is achievable goals to streamline.
Reduce building costs.
The faster, the faster we get the projects approved, the less holding costs and...
Because time means money.
Time is money. Time is money.
So the faster we can get them through.
And the more clarity we provide then on what the expectations of the community are, the easier it'll be, because they don't have to redesign projects, and they know exactly, there's no hidden cost, because they know it upfront.
Increase incentives.
That can be done as well. So we have, through the process of these specific plan updates, there may be opportunities where if a project is designed to a certain level, there may be incentives. You have it in their general plan right now, right? And you have a density bonus increase that you facilitate for projects that are designed in a manner and in close proximity to transit. I won't use the other example of 25%, but of other types of projects, but we do have language currently in the general plan that if projects meet certain criteria, the council could consider granting a density. First Street Village is a perfect example. We actually granted them a bump, a density increase, if they included the mixed, the moderate-income units as microunits. That was one example. So you have incentives, but I think those incentives also need to be incorporated into the zoning regulations in the specific plan.
So the developer knows ahead of time, as opposed to a give-and-take the night of.
Sometimes there's still that give-and-take, but at least they come in with a more polished project for you to look at, right? So I think that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you, that's all I got. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Murphy.
Thank you. I want to start off by saying that I think staff has made an excellent recommendation. I'm not real happy about the new governor's aggressive behavior towards Huntington Beach. I don't know the facts there, but I think the governor and the state needs to remember that they're the ones that took our redevelopment money, because the city doesn't build houses. We encourage people to build houses. And it's just stupid, Governor Newsom, to attack cities that are trying to work within these rules. I'm not all that concerned about SB 50, because apparently his previous law didn't pass. And it looks like the legislature's scrambling to put together another law that's better. But I think the 12,000 is a realistic goal. And as long as I'm picking on the governor, where are we going to get the water? You know? I mean, do they ever think about that? So, but I think it's a really well-thought-out plan. I think it's a good number. I think staff has thought of everything. My only concern is I'd like to take another look at the incentives before we put it into the rules, because, you know, I was listening to you, and I'm thinking, I'm okay with that. But when you said, you know, eliminate or knock down open space, you know, unless there's a park nearby, people have to have someplace to breathe or just look at beauty. So I'd just like to get my teeth into those a little bit more. But I think it's a really good report and a good goal. And we'll do the best we can.
I had a couple of other questions. Everybody's okay with that? Are there any provisions that you're aware of that help cities that have their own nonprofit housing corporations? It's been a frustration of mine, as you know, that we've had a Burbank Housing Corporation that's built our low-income and extremely low-income housing, from veterans' housing to family-promised transitional housing, to emancipated youth housing, to Catalina low-income family housing. And the story that we have needs to be told to Sacramento. And having incentives that reward that needs to be secured also. So I want to know whether you're aware of anything on the horizon that would recognize cities that have this capability. And as you so well said, Councilmember Murphy, when we had redevelopment, we had a funding stream to BHC.
So I'll start off, and then I'll let Mary Bell Leland add to that. Currently, I haven't heard of any specific incentives for cities that have a corporation like we have through the Burbank Housing Corporation. I think one of the things that we, I have a couple of notes that I'd like to explain. One is that, in the past, as you indicated, Mayor, is that in the past, we had redevelopment funds. And so we were able to fund a lot of these projects through redevelopment. And I believe that while those were very good projects, that the city or the state does not recognize those projects in moving forward. Currently, all of the bills that we've looked at, and what the governor has indicated is he's very interested in where we are and what we're doing in the future, and having meet those goals that he's set for the state in total. And so I have not heard of any specific incentives or reduced allocations or anything based on that. The other thing that we need to recognize is that we have brought to you three projects, I believe, in the last two years, all of those triplexes. So we will have a total of nine units. But doing those nine units has cost us almost 400, no, that's not right, about 150, 500,000 per unit. So, so almost a half a million dollars there for those units. We're using, a lot of the funds are coming through successor agency funds, and we are starting to run out of those. Those will not continue in perpetuity. So the funds that we still have in those successor agency are, we're hoarding those, for lack of a better word, because we want to build something for our homeless. And we're worried that if we start spending more of that money, that little bit that is left, that we will not have the opportunity to build something as something comes forward. So our goal is to reserve some of those funds. So if we can find what we would like to build for our homeless, maybe a hotel, an existing hotel that could be repurposed, something like that. If that opportunity comes forward, we want to make sure that we're prepared and that we can afford to buy something like that. So two things. One, we're running out of those funds, and we will not be able to continue to purchase these kind of units. And two, what we have left, we're kind of being picky on whether we move forward.
And the only thing to add, I also, we...
Push your button.
Here we go. The one thing I did want to mention to Ms. McFarland's answer is that we do receive very limited home funds. And for the home funds that we get from the federal government, those do require that we work with a local nonprofit, which is specifically a community housing development organization like BHC. But in terms of specific incentives, not as of yet. So as our partner, we've worked with them very closely, at least to utilize those home funds. And part of that was the reinvestment of monies back into one of our original focus neighborhoods, which was Elmwood a couple of years back. Yes, thank you. Mary Bell Leland with Community Development Department.
Well, I'm sure that I will adjust my thinking about this, but it's a fact that underwriting the cost of very low and extremely low-income units is extremely expensive. That's why the private sector does not do it. And I just hope that the representative, maybe from the BIA tonight, can take note that if we're going to get, you know, new housing, the developers are going to want to put in affordable, moderate-income units, just like Mr. Behunin did in his project. But if we're going to get housing that's aimed at people who are in low-wage jobs, we need additional funding from the state in lieu of the loss of redevelopment to help underwrite that cost, because the cost of construction and the cost of land is not going to evaporate suddenly. And so those deep subsidies, as you so rightly pointed out, Mrs. McFarland, are going to be needed to build the kind of units that we can hold for 55 years at those lower-income rates and have low-wage earners in the city be able to live in Burbank as well as work in Burbank. And if there were another message I want to send to Sacramento, this is kind of winding me up, because I'd like to have a send a letter. This is part of the message I'd like to send. Councilmember Telemont.
Yes, thank you. You know, I'm glad that you put in the P3s in there. It's part of your report, because that's very important. I mean, we need to at least look at them, reach out to the private industry and see what's available. If we can provide some of the land, they can bring in some of the money. We have a project. It's that simple.
That simple, yeah.
We've got a representative of the building industry here. We can, you know, the partnership, we can build a lot of, a lot of units here in the city of Burbank with that. I just want to thank you again. You know, just as far as the Huntington Beach situation, I believe, my understanding of it is that Huntington Beach said, they have a plan, and they had a number. And they came back and said, we don't, we don't want, we're not dealing with that number anymore. We're ignoring that number, we're doing something else. And that's where the governor came down, because they're not adhering to the plan.
I suspected, but, you know, I don't know. And I just think it's unconscionable that they can take the redevelopment money and suddenly pick out a city and do that. You know, we have, we have an obligation, but I'm still wondering about the water. Okay, we're going to build how many units? Where's it coming from? The Lake Mead is going down? You know, we've got problems, but we'll do what we can.
I'm going to answer Huntington Beach as best I can, simply, because I heard this on a conference call yesterday. In 2015, Huntington Beach's housing element reduced the number of sites available for housing. The state was not happy. The state and the city staff worked together to develop a compliant housing element, showing all the, you know, the sites. And the City Council of Huntington Beach rejected that amendment. So as a result, state law provides that housing and community development at the state level can file against any city with a non-compliant housing element. So they're out of compliance, they're being sued. So you're right, Councilmember Telemont, and the council action, that's where they're at. And the rest I didn't understand, so that's as good as I can make. Vice Mayor Springer.
Ms. McFarland, could you please define P3 and give an example?
Sure. A P3 is a public partnership, public-private partnership, which is where the P3 comes from. And basically, we could possibly do one. I'll give you an example that we may want to look at in the future, and that is with our library. So instead of renovating our current library, we could look at doing a P3 where we would bring in a development partner and ask them to build housing, and the bottom floor could be a new library. Some kind of combination thereof. It could contain some retail pieces in it, and then a library, say, parking underneath. First floor could be retail or a little restaurant. Second floor could be the new library. Third floor and up could be housing. So some type of partnership is what we're looking at with a P3. And I think that that is just one example. There are many examples that we could do within the city. And so as we're moving forward, and we're looking at development opportunities, we're hoping that more of these will come, become known to us, and that we will be actually aggressively looking for those.
Thank you. And I agree with the mayor, RE, owner-occupied units and the importance of those. And on page 820 of our housing element, our owner-occupied housing units has declined from 1990 to 2010. And not a lot, but almost 2% for owner-occupied, from 45.7% to 44%. And renter-occupied has increased from 54.3% to 56%. And I think it's important that our residents have the opportunity to build wealth. And I know that the distribution of the different housing types will come, but it does look to be declining. And you mentioned Mr. Ramirez infill projects. Aren't they all infill projects in Burbank?
Yes, a lot of them are infill projects, but the range of those can be from a block within a large area, or where you maybe have two lots that are, let's say, in an R4 zone, where you've got other apartment complexes. Someone comes in, buys those two lots, and infills or puts another project on that. So infill could be very broad. It could be a large swath of land, or just one lot that's being infilled with a project. So I use it kind of in a very broad manner, but it's what we're doing. Basically, I don't think there's a lot of vacant land, except for a few parcels, like the 77 Front Street site. There are opportunities, when you talk about P3s that Simone mentioned, including our Civic Center area, where the city is a large landholder of surface parking lots. Those are potential infill sites as well. So there are a lot of tools in your toolbox that can be considered. And we're looking at the wide range. So if there's opportunities for for sale, rent, owner-occupancy opportunities as well as rental, it's all within, you know, your capability, especially when you own the land. You can kind of set the requirements. But public-private partnerships are another great opportunity to kind of put additional conditions on a project and potentially create more housing opportunities.
I know that our housing requirements are tied to jobs. What happens if something really happens to our job market, and that there's just a tremendous hit on it and a tremendous decline? Like maybe major employers leave the area, like that happened with Lockheed all those years ago. Do we just continue to build 12,000 units?
Well, the 12,000 units, the goal, the goal of trying to achieve 12,000 units is looking at basically a planning period that is in line with your 2035 general plan. So if we're talking 2020 through 2035, that's 15 years. So if we can build out those units, remember, you're house, you're job-rich and house-poor. So unless every business leaves town, you're still way in the hole, so to speak, in the ditch, when it comes to the number of units that we've built. So I think even 12,000 units, just for existing demand locally, is not enough, but it's a good start. And we can use it as a way to show the state that we're trying to meet our Reno numbers. So I think, even if you saw a decline, I think in employment, which I would be shocked, because I think right now, if you look at the media and TV and streamlining, the city's positioned to see, potentially, I think employment's going to grow. We just want to keep pace with it from a housing standpoint, because if not, your jobs-to-housing ratio is going to continue to grow. And the potential's always there, for, especially now with technology, to take 5,000 employees and move them to Austin, because they're building housing. So we want to position ourselves in a way that it's sustainable, it addresses the traffic impacts. But we're leading from the front, as opposed to reacting from behind. And I think that's really important. This is a great first step, if the council does agree to move the housing goals, because now it puts things in play from staff's standpoint, that now we know things to look at and tailor to bring back for you for further consideration. So I think Councilmember Murphy said he wants another bite of the apple on the incentives. Going down this route would actually give that opportunity, because we would be bringing back those incentives to you through density bonus and inclusionary. So there's opportunities there.
And I'd just like to add, I'm sorry. I'd just like to add to Fred's response that if we did lose a large employer, right now, our intrinsic job growth is very, very high. So I've never been in a city before where we did not have to do heavy economic attraction. And in our city, we are lucky that we don't have to do that. The job growth just keeps happening. So if we were to lose a major employer, say Warner Brothers or somebody like that, our intrinsic job growth, I think, would quickly fill that back up. So that's one thing to consider.
Okay, thank you. And I was interested in the comments about, you know, amenities and it adds, they add to the cost of a project. And I know when we approved First Street Village, Mr. Buhenan was kind enough to agree to, you know, the bike path and the little park. And so we wouldn't lose that, right? Because I think we need the connectivity to get, you know, if we have like plain vanilla, but very comfortable housing development, if we have the connectivity to the gym and, you know, to the Y and to the pool. And so we'll still have the opportunity to ask for some contribution for that.
Oh, we are, we are making sure that we not only meet the bar of First Street, but take it a couple of notches up. So the projects that you will be seeing coming forward expand upon the neighborhood amenities. And in this particular case, First Street, it's a rental project, so there's not an HOA fee. There's a rent fee, but like for the moderate, you've deed restricted it, so it's, it's pretty much set. And the other units are still going to be affordable. I think there's such a high demand for housing that the developers are smart enough to know that they put these amenities in, it makes their project that more attractive and that more marketable. So I think we're just going to keep continuing to push the bar and hopefully you'll be happy with some of the stuff that's coming forward in the future.
Okay, and I neglected to mention open space, which is also, if, if we don't have it on the property, then it could be, you know, a few blocks away or the streets could be parklight to get to the gym or the pool.
All those things.
Okay. And I'm not sure if you can answer this, but what about the schools? Do we know like the impact on the schools?
I'll let Simone talk to the schools. But I'll, I'm going to give you my planner response and then she can add detail to it. And that is every project that comes forward has to pay what's called the development impact fee. So they pay a school fee on a per-square-foot basis. And that money is paid for every one of the projects. So whether it's commercial or residential, they pay a, a one-time fee that's upfront. And that's, that's intended to help with, you know, infrastructure, school, school infrastructure. But in addition to that, I think Simone can kind of talk about the current occupancy as far as the rates in the schools.
So, so one of the things I'd like to say is the, the school site leaders say that our schools are actually full right now. But a couple of things. One is that we are looking at a 6.6% decrease in population for the school-aged students moving forward. That's already been happening since 2010. And by 2021, we're predicted to have that decrease and we continue to see it happen. So while the schools leaders say that the schools are full, we do know that there's about 1,200 students that they're taking from out of district. And we think that that population might even be higher because of the underground, people coming, using a Burbank residence as their, their residence to get into our excellent schools. So that number may even be double the 1,200 that we're looking at. It could be up to 2,400. Based on the, the number of the 12,000, we don't think that that will highly impact the schools in the total number. Now, maybe the schools have indicated that there may be concerns of where those students go and how they fit into the closest school. But overall, on the big picture, we think that that number's going to probably equal approximately where we are now. Granted, the, the schools stopped accepting out-of-district transfers into it. In the earthquake, when it falls off.
And I hope there, moving forward, there's a provision to protect historical architecture, you know, of some of these infill sites, that the facades could be protected and built around. I think is very important.
Sure. I think that's always in the back of planning staff's mind where we can actually adapt the reuse buildings. I think that's a discussion we have with the developers. And most of the sites we're looking at, you know, like in First Street, it was a lot of just, you know, segmented industrial buildings. But a lot of the other sites are actually lots that are vacant or they're just underutilized with industrial, like when we talk about the airport district area. So there's not much there architecturally. So we're trying to be strategic and where we're looking at areas of a new development. But you're right. If there are some architectural features that can either be preserved or replicated and kind of used as the architectural language for the new building, that's something we can look at as well.
Right, there might not be many, but there are some.
There are some, yes.
So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Frutos, followed by Councilmember Telemontes.
I appreciate the staff's report. I mean, it's, it's a reality. But I get worried when I look at this picture here because I can't support going into R1 locations. To me, this is just a start of eventually 30 years from now, R1 disappearing. So I agree with the mayor. You know, I'm still very solid on protecting R1 and not allowing this type. And I'm just giving you my thoughts.
Yeah, sure.
I do appreciate the staff, don't get me wrong. Two, it makes me very nervous when I see this young lady come to our council meeting, Ms. Coronado. And at the bottom of her, her email, her letter here, "The Voice of Building and Development." That scares me because I don't want to rush through this. I want to see what other cities, because this is a, a work in progress. No matter what the governor wants to do, there's still other cities that are not happy within pushing. And to just literally go 100 miles an hour to build all these units. And I know it only says for 15, but what I've been hearing is, hey, we want to get on the bandwagon. This is what's happening. I, I don't like that because I think we're going to, we're opening the floodgates just to build, to build. I like what we've done in the past and that's build better neighborhoods, what you said. So, you know, to me, to reduce building costs, that's directly money that goes into the general fund. Because what I haven't heard is Council Murphy kind of alluded to it. We talked about where we're going to get the water. Well, I've never heard anything talking about, are we going to increase our police department? How are we going to handle more calls for service? That's never added in there. We're still staffing our city, which we were doing about 10 years ago with that number of officers, but we're still growing. So to me, as you're working with developers, slow down. Let's make sure that we're building better, quality neighborhoods because the residents, the voters, all they see is three or four developments going in all at once. And right away, hey, how come you're allowing all this development? I think if we do it slow and methodical and see how this, this law evolves, if it's being redlined right now, we could be jumping the gun. And all of a sudden, we're locked into this and we don't think about it. Or if we just kind of slow down, I, I support the staff report, don't get me wrong. I know you guys are doing a great job. But what I'm hearing is full speed ahead. It makes me nervous. And now I've got lobbyists for developers coming into our city to give me all these recommendations where I've appreciated everything staff has done in the past, working with developers and voicing what the council policies are. So I always get concerned when I see lobbyists here. And I bring up the project near Councilman Murphy's house, right there on Olive and Reese. Originally, it was supposed to be, you know, amenities at the bottom with four or five luxury apartments on top. And now it's a urgent care center. So there has to be some flexibility on these, you know, developments moving forward so that we're also flexible. I don't want to be that solid that we're not giving a developer an opportunity to be creative in his project and let the council digest, hey, we never thought about, you know, you know, this type of amenity or micro units. That's the first time we really got into micro units. So, you know, slow down a little bit, you know? Let us digest what we feel are, you know, the incentives that we would agree with or give us a list so at least we kind of have an idea what you guys are thinking about as you move forward. But I, I definitely did not like this when I saw this picture and it's encroaching in an R1 area and that scares me.
Madam Mayor, if I, just to clarify, I totally understand your reaction's probably not atypical. One thing I would note on that exhibit is the, when you see those little yellow dots in the single-family residential, they're noting those as accessory dwelling units that are being kind of peppered through the neighborhood. But you're right. I think we wholeheartedly, over the last two years, I've heard you need to protect the single family. So one of the things, every tool in the toolkit that I've been inferring is one that has to come back for you to okay. So even though we set a goal of 12,000, there's no way, even with just the staff capacity, that we could approve all of these in the next, you know, three years. So what we're saying is we want to go slow to meet our goal over 15 years, but we're going to be very methodical. We're going to come back to you. We're going to get your input and the community input on inclusionary, on density bonus. The numbers that we're telling you, the 12,000, remember I showed you that, that image of the bar graph and it said 17,000 and 19,000 for the general plan in measure one? Well, when those were approved, we went and did an environmental impact report. And in there, it looked at things like what Councilmember Murphy noted, which is, are we going to have enough water? Are we going to have enough electrical? What are the impacts to city services? So one of the things that's coming to you in the near future, and the building industry may not like this, but it's coming, is we're going to be looking at our development impact fees and, and our developers paying their fair share of cost. And I will tell you that we are sorely undermarket and we haven't looked at those since the 90s. So, and one thing they may be happy with and others they may not. But I think this process, you're right, is you are very, very clear in the understanding that you want to basically be able to think this out. All this does is set kind of the goal. But what's going to take a lot of work is bringing all these things back to you so that you can basically approve each component of the plan to meet that long-term goal. So that's all coming back. So I, I just want to go on record saying we're not going to go out and approve 3,000 units tomorrow. Every one of the projects that's being considered, other than smaller infill density bonus projects, are all going to come before the council.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Telemontes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, there's not going to be a perfect plan. And it's always going to be incumbent upon these five seats, the people whoever might be here when they make the decisions, to think back about what we're talking about responsible development. So I feel that all of us up here have felt, have mentioned the fact that we don't want to encroach into the R1 neighborhoods. We want to keep them safe, they're sacred. You know, so we've, we've got to consider that. But at the same time, we've got to remember that we've got some issues with, we haven't built, how many units was it? 87 units in 10 years? What is?
Uh, we've built 323 in the last six. And that's basically, we still need to build another 2,300 for arena number.
So I think we have been going slow. I think we've been very, very proactive when it comes to what are we going to build? Let's make it responsible growth. We're not going to please everyone. I've said this before. Not everybody's going to be happy with what we do, whatever direction we take. In spite of the fact that we might feel that's, that's the proper thing to do, you're still going to have some people. You know, and I just heard that the other day. Somebody mentioned that there are people in the community that go to bed angry and wake up angry. So guess what? Who's going to be the first people that they attack? Any decision that might have been made on a Tuesday night. But having said that, you know, I think that sacredness or the, just the making sure that we take care of the residents, the residential housing first and stay away as far as we can from them. And stick to the areas, like you was mentioning, that don't have any historical significance. But one man's trash is another man's, right? Castle, so you've just got to keep that in mind as we move forward. And, and it's a plan that we set forward with everything, with as much information that we have today. You know, because like we can, they can, somebody down in, in 2030 can look and back and say, hey, in 2019, they make this decision. I wonder what that was based on? What do they do that for? Just like we're looking back at 2002. I mean, it was a good plan at the time, for the circumstances at the time and all the rules and regulations that were in place. That's what we're doing with this here moving forward. It sounds like a big number. I agree with you, Councilmember Frutos. It is a big number. But if we do it diligently and we do it with responsible development, I think we should have the majority of people down the road happy or at least pleased, if not happy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Springer.
It's, when I'm out and about, I tend to look at sites that might be underdeveloped and have some redevelopment potential, especially if they're close to one of our three MetroLink stations. And in this plan, is it not a good idea to focus on those redevelopment sites that are not single-family adjacent? And there seems to be many of those, like below Glen Oaks. And also, I think that all of our neighborhoods should be protected. I mean, we have, we have multifamily neighborhoods. I'm thinking of Angeleno and downtown Burbank. And I think they would appreciate some protection that, you know, that what goes around them is very thoughtfully considered. And in, in the report, is, may we refer to like up to 12,000 units? Is that possible or does that like put us in trouble with the state?
So I, I think the goal of achieving 12,000 is within what was envisioned as capacity within the general plan. So I, I think trying to achieve a goal of 12 within that timeframe is commendable. Keep in mind, every eight years or so, we have to get our housing element updated. So I think when we say, is it a, I'm concerned when we say a cap because that leads us into other discussion. But if it's, hey, let's do it in a responsible manner. Let's do it in a well-thought-out systematic way. I think we've provided at least the framework for it. And what'll be important is how you all, working with staff in the community, help us formulate the plan to keep on pace with that number. So we may not get to 12. We may end up at eight or nine. But that's a whole lot better than, as Councilmember Telemontes noted, 323 in five years. And I think if you do that, then I think you are making a concerted effort that the state will look at and say, you're a lot further along, city of Burbank, than you were five years ago when you did this last housing element. So every eight years, we can recalibrate and check, are we building the right units? What do we need to do? Do we slow things down? Do we make some adjustments? I think that'll happen. It's not just like you're setting the date today and we're putting it on auto cruise. No, we are, you're going to be, this is an ongoing iteration. We're going to be working through this with the housing element. By the way, that's coming up in 2021. So you'll have a bite of the apple a lot sooner than you think, so.
I, I just have another comment that really with the state-manded ADUs, there, there is no single-family exclusive neighborhoods anymore. They're all doubled. So, and I think that's all of my questions for now.
Councilmember Frutos.
Mr. Ramirez, I have to ask you this. It came out publicly tonight. How does a rent control impact how we work with developers? How does it impact with them really investing in our city to, what we want is building better neighborhoods?
So I think the new, the new stuff is not as big an issue as it is with, with the laws that are in place for older units. So, but I think when you restrict rents, just my opinion, you're asking me as a, as a planner. Whenever we put restrictions on the rent that could be charged, more often than not, what I've seen is that people that, the landowners that have it, try to avoid, more often than not, to make improvements because they don't see the return on investment. That's not to say that it's not worthwhile to consider other options to increase affordability and keep people in their homes. We want, don't want to displace people. But I am of the mind to think that creating more opportunities for housing is a lot better than artificially reducing the rents. So the more supply you, you provide, the lower the demand and therefore the price recalibrates itself through that process. But when you haven't built housing in a, in a long time, rent control may be more problematic because it's going to actually artificially reduce the, the value. And what's, then what's the point of someone buying property and looking at rehabbing it? But I think if we can, through this process, working with developers, introduce new units through inclusionary and density bonus, I think we make a lot more headway. I think the mayor brought up the fact that we've built through BHC maybe eight units. And if each one of those is $500,000, imagine when we can get a density bonus project for, let's say, 46 units and eight of those are required deed-restricted by law. And the developer has to pay for it. And the developer's basically ensuring that they're going to be deed-restricted. To me, that seems like a big time To me, that seems like a big-time return on investment, and you're not out of pocket, you know, four million plus. So I think there's a lot more opportunities to find a middle ground with the developers, and you're, you're, you're enticing them with the ability to be able to build the yield up through density and give you the affordable units for fifty-five years, uh, deed restricted. So those are new opportunities.
Well, I was going to say, it's been a really rich discussion, and I wondered if the council is ready to move on and take an action with the staff recommendation tonight.
Oh.
Vice Mayor Springer has a comment.
Um, moving forward, like in the, in our plans, um, I think, I think we all believe this, that we, um, don't want to segregate our different populations, you know, put all veterans here, all our seniors here, all our emancipated youth here, all of, and I know needs are different, but, um, I think we worked well together on Mr. Behannon's project in terms of, of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Frutos.
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor, if we're ready.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, build twelve thousand dwelling units during the next fifteen years, mainly along the I-5 freeway corridor, uh, which includes downtown Burbank, Burbank Center Plan area, Airport District, uh, Golden State Specific Plan area, and parts of the Media District Specific Plan area. This would create a jobs-to-housing ratio of two point five seven.
Okay, there's a motion before us. It has been seconded. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes. Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Springer.
Yes.
Mayor Gable Luddy.
Yes. Thank you, staff.
Can I make a quick comment before we leave this?
Yes.
Uh, there's a young lady in the audience who, uh, last week, if I recall correctly, was concerned about us closing libraries. And in the PPP comment, um, it's important that you understand that instead of fixing the central library, I think, which is the one she was talking about, and rebuilding it from scratch, in a public-private partnership, we would give the land to somebody and they would build the library into like the first three floors. So we wouldn't be closing the library, because we kind of promised her last week that we had never closed a library.
Well, and I'm going to suggest that she talk to maybe our community development director, who's here, or Simone, who just left, to get, uh, clarification. Thank you. Councilmembers, the last report this evening to council is the City of Burbank two thousand and nineteen legislative platform by the City Manager's Office. Good evening, Ms. Delion.
Good evening, council. Great discussion earlier. So, uh, Mayor Gable Luddy and Councilmembers Erica Delion with the City Manager's Office. So this evening, on, last on the agenda, staff is seeking council's approval of the two thousand and nineteen legislative platform. And building upon our last platform, this would be the sixth revision. Um, and a legislative platform is a summary of locally-approved policy statements that provide a general framework for the city's response to state and federal legislation. The purpose of this platform is to clearly outline the position of the city on priority issues and matters that would impact the city's ability to operate effectively while still allowing flexibility to address legislative and budget issues that may arise during the legislative, um, session. So this document has been reviewed by all city departments, and it also includes informations from our two advocacy firms. Uh, I will be happy to answer any specific questions later, but first I want to identify the major themes that are in the platform. Um, first, our primary focus continues to be the preservation of the local decision-making authority. And we continue to seek and maintain state and federal funding for the city's vital projects, programs, and services that our Burbank residents continue to enjoy. Some of the major changes in the platform includes an update on the greenhouse gas reduction targets, uh, opposition to state initiatives that would remove local control of housing developments, fire vegetation management, support of seismic and wildfire safety regulation, a new technology priority that seeks legislative support to promote the use of data to create efficiencies, and support to seek new transit connections to our workforce, just to name a few. Also, I want to note that, uh, for proposed legislation that is consistent with the city's legislative priorities, our current practice does grant staff the authority to prepare position letters for the mayor's signature. Um, items that are not addressed in our legislative platform, platform will require council direction. Um, so that concludes my presentation, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions if there are no public comment.
I have a speaker card, so if you please have a seat. You may want to sit here where there's a microphone, and then you can just make yourself comfortable and answer questions. I have a speaker, uh, from Queen Cyril's. Is Ms. Cyril's here? We're walking out to find her. Are you Ms. Cyril's?
Yes, I am.
You turned in a speaker card?
Yes, I did. Good evening, good evening, uh, Mayor. Uh, let me, I, I want to say this right. Please, let me take my time. I didn't know. I had to speak with them before I left. Okay, Mayor Gable Luddy. Uh, Vice Mayor Springer, it's so good to see you again. Uh, Councilmember Frutos. Frutos and Councilmember Murphy.
It's me.
Right here. And Councilmember Talamontes. Did I say it right? I've been practicing every time I hear it. Okay, this was an awesome meeting, and I'm so grateful that I had to stay for the whole meeting. I was trying to get in and say something quickly at the beginning, and, um, everything that I wanted to talk about basically was addressed, and thank you for asking the question about the P3s, because I had that down as a question, and you answered it. But I do want to say some things as a, a member who has found myself self-displaced, uh, and speaking on be- behalf of the people who are unhoused, I hate to use that word homeless, because frankly, I'm at home with myself where I stand. And so I'm not going to be reduced to something that I'm not, especially since I have the equivalent of three master's degrees and taught school for over thirty-five years, and things happen. Um, so one thing I want to say is, setting goals for housing, instead of just establishing, uh, talking about the housing-to-jobs ratio, consider the housing-to-the-unhoused ratio when you're considering these things. Uh, and, um, redistribute some of the two million in funding, uh, to increase the current housing voucher uh, program that we have. I see that they're considering those increases already. I saw that in red in the report. Uh, but that's what I was saying. I want to make sure that those amounts are increased, because it's very difficult to find housing for the amount of those vouchers. And I've suggested to your, uh, Community Development Department already some ideas that I have to involve the, uh, public sector as well, because what I've seen is that there are so many kind people and philanthropic people that want to help, but the current situation does not allow them to help, because, you know, I can't get a unit with my voucher and then somebody else pay the balance. Whereas if, say, the, the voucher unit would, amount was increased to maybe fifteen hundred, well then, if the unit, the market value is seventeen fifty, this good Samaritan could pay that difference and get a tax credit. Excuse me for going over. I'll come back and talk about the rest of these at another time.
Yeah, come back. You're welcome to come back.
Yeah, but that is one thing that I wanted to talk about for sure, and it's some other important things. Is this going to be continued on Thursday, or this portion of the?
You can come to our meeting on Thursday if you want to make general public comments.
Okay, and, and I can address something that was on the agenda for tonight? Or I, I can't?
This item will be done tonight.
Oh, this item five? About the DNA testing, the, the safety issues? That's very important.
I'm sorry, you've kind of exceeded your three-minute time, so, you know, when, when staff is finished with her report, you can speak with her further.
Okay.
I do have to call time on you.
Okay, I read something that I really need to address. Maybe I'll send it in an email.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you. Sounds good? Thank you. Council questions of staff? Councilmember Frutos.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Erica, I want to get, uh, when you're writing this report out, there's a, there's a question that I have regarding, what is your definition with regards with this staff report? Irresponsible housing development. Tell me how legislatively, uh, what's the definition of that or the intent of that comment?
Um, I would suggest that this would be any, um, negatively impacts that would have to our single-family neighborhoods. Um, as we heard in the discussion, I think that would be, in our situation, irresponsible development.
Is there any way, uh, that we can, uh, maybe reword this? Because I think it should be a little bit more specific, uh, irresponsible housing development. Oh, I'm on page three, and it's our bullet points for let's say, platform. I'm in the, uh, staff report.
And Councilmember Frutos, we can certainly be more specific in that bullet.
I would like to, like, protect the N-R1 zone. I mean, I don't know what my colleagues might feel with that, but that was just my question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Erica.
Uh, uh, before I recognize, Councilmember Murphy, to the extent you heard what Ms. Cyril's raised, are you able to respond to her comments?
I can definitely talk to her to see what her specific comments were.
Okay, all right, thank you. Others? Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah, on the, uh, airport, uh, support on page two, you guys have covered generally, uh, what I think we all believe in, but I, I know we've also tried for many, many years to get a, uh, curfew, and we have kind of a voluntary curfew, um, that sometimes works, and I would like to see actually that word used in there somewhere, if it's not a big deal.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can add that back, or add it to the language.
Thank you. The word curfew?
Curfew.
We put noise relief, nighttime noise relief.
Yeah, I thought that was a little bit too general, because I know.
Right, so I'm saying we can say the word curfew.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Including curfews.
Including curfews. How's that?
Yeah, fine. And then, um, on the homelessness, uh, we've got, uh, street outreach teams. But I was just thinking in general, um, you know, housing and mental health, uh, outreach. Because I mean, we have those Measure H funds that, uh, allegedly we're going to see, and that would help us with our housing to, hu- housing goals. Almost at housing to jobs.
I'll double-check if that's not already part of our, um, overall housing plan. I don't know if that might be incorporated, but I'll double-check, and then if not, we can make some adjustment to that. Housing and mental health outreach, you said it correct?
Yes.
So I think we listed it under the public safety, and I don't know if that covers your interest. On page seven, under public safety, we support supportive programs and solutions that assist in preventing, reducing crimes such as drug prevention programs, mental health initiatives.
Okay.
I'm not sure. And, and it said, and solutions for homeless, I.
That'll work.
Thank you, Amy.
All right, I have one. Um, as the staff knows, I, I sent them s- I, I would like a policy under technology, which starts on, I think, page eleven. Technology we support. Um, and, um, I sent an email to Ms. Delion, some jumbled-up language about supporting legislation that would stop the wayfinding apps from directing drivers through our residential neighborhoods. And maybe if you have language that you would like to offer, you could tell us now.
Yeah, so, um, as I mentioned to Mayor Gable Luddy, we did have a general statement under the technology priority that states improved transportation and mobility. But if you want something more specific, I would suggest something along the lines of support legislative initiatives that grant local governments the ability or tools to prevent wayfinding apps from negatively impacting local neighborhood streets. Something along those lines of council wishes to add that.
It, it, I got, see, two nods. Jess is not sure. You're good with it? Good with it? Tim, you're good with it? Trying to keep people from driving through our residential streets? I don't know what the solution is?
We'll add it.
Maybe nobody does, but, Mr. Davis.
If I might, it might be more effective if, if I heard Ms. Delion right. She said something to the effect of you could lo- regulate it locally. But the ability to do that is, is probably not there, as I understand technology. What might be helpful is the same language, but to do it at the state level, meaning to cause wayfinding apps to not direct traffic through residential neighborhoods. And to support legislation towards that goal.
Support legislation towards that goal.
Effective if it were state legislation, and I doubt there's a city that would disagree with you.
Right, right. A- and I don't know the exact answer. I mean, so why don't we put it in as, as a, a position? I like Mr. Davis's recommendation for the nuanced change in language. I wasn't trying to pick on ways, but I was talking about wayfinding digital applications. Yeah. And believe me, we are not the only city with this issue. You all know that, so. All right, there's agreement of council that we add it. Thank you. Councilmember Frutos or Vice Mayor Springer?
Um, I have a question about the California Water Fix, and, um, and it says, "You support administrative and legislative plans that foster the California Water Fix." A com- comma, "A comprehensive ecosystem restoration and protection plan for the Delta as the best alternative to meet California's co-equal goals of water supply reliability and Dec- Delta ecosystem restoration." How do we know if it's the best alternative if it's not defined? Page, oh, I'm sorry, I was, I'm on page thirteen of the, the marked-up draft, because I see, um, so, it's, it's on page thirteen.
Yes, um, maybe Mr. Somana from Burbank Water and Power can assist with that answer?
Yes, hi. George Somana, General Manager, Burbank Water and Power. This thing has, um, has gone through a lot of, uh, iterations for decades, and I think there's a difference of opinion out there. Uh, and so through the process, they've already identified the best approach, and there'll be argument, what is the best approach? Uh, and so at this time, what we'd like to see is an end to all the, uh, you know, decades of work and, and get the reliability of the water supply that we've invested in over the decades.
So what does that mean? Does that mean that it's the, um, the, the two tunnels?
That, that's what the, yes, the two tunnels.
I think that was the final vote, right?
That was the final vote, yes.
So, um, the governor supports that?
I'm not sure about the new governor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Frutos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Ms. Delion, getting back to transportation infrastructure on page thirteen. Um, we did take a position to support double-tracking, so when we're talking about new transit connections, and we're talking about the Golden Specific Plan, um, how come it wasn't mentioned to, you know, maybe get some funding so we can finally get double-tracking to increase the frequency of metro league, uh, trains up and down that corridor? No, it's not on.
Is, if you see on the exhibit, um,
Oh, I see it.
A, the red line on page thirteen, new transit connections, there is a double-track.
Perfect. Thank you for correcting me. Thank you.
You just thought it, it showed up. That's very impressive. Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah, I worked really hard looking for something to criticize here. I think that this is just a really good, thoughtful, uh, way to go, and I think it's, I think it's excellent. Um, sure.
I just have questions. So may I approve it?
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Okay.
Yes.
May I, um, just approve it all, just with the exception of the California water fix? And not that I, I mean, I support a reliable source of water. I think I did that last time.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll take it out.
Yeah.
Or just for me.
We'll do a first vote on everything but that policy.
So move.
There's a second?
Before we get into that, I wanted to provide suggested language from our city attorney for the irresponsible development on page six. Um, so perhaps language to the end of that to state, um, yes, I'll read the whole thing. So oppose any state initiative that would remove local control and interfere with protection of single residential neighborhoods in, um, in Burbank.
I, I would leave in the irresponsible.
Oh, yes.
So leave the language and then include interfere with protection of single-family neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods. Okay, so we'll add it that way.
Everybody okay with that modification? All right, so I'm going to go back and entertain a motion to approve everything except the policy on California water fix as amended by the council this evening.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just have a point. Why are we putting that off to the side, the one item?
Uh, it's the language on California water fix that the vice mayor wanted, requested it just be taken as a sec, separate vote. It will pass. It's just, we're going to honor her request.
Okay, you see into the future, that's really good.
All right. Please pull the council.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Telemontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Springer? So this is the one with it deleted from my vote, right? Yes. Okay, yes. Mayor Gable Luddy?
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve our platform on the California water fix.
Second.
So move.
Okay. Murphy moved.
Sorry, he's, he's awfully quick.
I'm entertaining.
I'm older, I'm slow. The mayor was entertaining.
I was entertaining and everybody got ahead of me. It's just like, okay. Um, so it's Murphy, Frutos. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Telemontes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Springer? No. Mayor Gable Luddy?
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Daley on.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, for all of your contributions. Well done. Uh, this is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Who wants to go first? Councilmember Telemontes?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, over the weekend, I attended the Independent Cities Association Seminar. Um, it was over 100, like 110 people attended from, from the various cities that are members of the ICA. Uh, we had, uh, LA County Fire Chief as the keynote speaker and, uh, the group organized, uh, recognized the San, Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department as well as Caltrans District Five because of all the issues that they've been having up there with, not only with the fires, but then another floods that are happening because of the rain. Um, another thing I just want to give a shout out to, my brother's business, uh, Buddy's All-Stars, uh, they were fortunate enough to get the, they've been dealing with the Rams for the last couple of years since they moved here. So it's been three years now. Uh, so they got, uh, they've been doing the, there was an article in the paper in the Leader. So if anybody read the Leader, I'm sure you saw the article. Uh, and they did a Channel 11, uh, Fox did a, a real good, uh, episode. They came into the business and he toured them and showed them all the jerseys and, and...
Shouldn't we plug the business?
The 53, Buddy's All-Stars?
There you go.
In Burbank, they've been here for over 35 years.
There you go.
It's a PSA.
Sorry.
Thank you. Other than that, that's all, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Frutos? Councilmember Murphy?
Um, I toured, uh, the Tellario facility, Tellaria facility, uh, the other day and, um, it was very, uh, interesting and impressive. Um, it, uh, has a lot of amenities. Uh, I'm not sure I could have added very much. Um, I think the highlight was probably the 35-seat theater, which is available with every movie known to man. Might, might never get out of there. Um, and, uh, also, uh, on Sunday, I, I worked with the Knights of Columbus, uh, to move table and chairs. I thought it was kind of ironic while I was doing it that when I graduated from Bellman Jefferson, I thought I'll never have to put these chairs up or take them down again. But that was not to be. That's it for me.
Vice Mayor Springer?
I, um, went, oh, my goodness. I, they had a planting day at Emerson Elementary, so I went and helped them plant their native garden. And it was also principal of the day there. I wasn't at that, but Kevin McCarnie from, um, Paquito Moss was. And I was with, um, Councilmember Murphy for the tour of the Tellaria, um, building, project. And this morning, I went to the Los Angeles County Commission on Local Government Services and there was, um, an interesting request by somebody who heads up the Ola, Heart of Los Angeles, um, nonprofit. Sounds a little bit like our, um, Boys and Girls Club, but anyway, they were appealing for, um, extension of the corporate benefits that Metro provides for ridership because the nonprofit workers are very, aren't very well paid. And so they're looking for a subsidy, um, or an exemption from the, the threshold that Metro imposes. And so it gave me something to think about. And also there was someone, Mary Ann was her name, was asking for a support letter from us to continue funding the comprehensive nutrition, education, and school wellness policy, um, for the Office of Education. And that pretty much completes it. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I know that, um, Councilmember Murphy and I think Councilwoman Telemontes and the vice mayor and maybe Councilmember Frutos were at the MLK Pancake Breakfast at the VFW on that holiday. It was, it was really well-attended and very nicely done. Um, so I want to acknowledge that event and acknowledge you for coming. Um, I attended Terry Tornick, Mayor of Pasadena, his State of the City address, which is extremely enlightening and very interesting, the way he did it. He did it in a, um, in a high school gymnasium and he did it on the city's budget. So it was a very different approach than, than the way we're used to here in Burbank. It was simple and effective and, and well-done. Um, I also, on Tuesday, the 29th, participated, uh, on Southern California Public Radio, KPPC, Larry Mantle's air talk. He had invited a, uh, two speakers to come on and since I was the mayor, I readily accepted. Um, and the discussion was about, um, the noise that's been caused more recently by flight pattern changes at Hollywood Burbank Airport. Um, it was very good, very respectful, and I was proud to represent the city in that, that kind of discussion. Yesterday, I listened to a two-hour webcast because I'm participating in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Subcommittee meeting. This is a SCAG organization and what I would like to do from now on is make sure that my notes from that meeting are made available to our planning staff. I mean, I'm happy to share with any of you if you want to see these notes, if you can understand them. Um, but it was, it was enlightening and I intend to continue doing that so that we, the city, can remain proactive on those numbers and be prepared to show our best face and how well we're doing. And then today, I was invited to thank the TSA workers at the Burbank Airport and I went there and I thanked the morning shift and the afternoon shift as they came on board. And I want to tell you that there was such a great outpouring of support from our community to help those federal workers who were, uh, not paid during the shutdown. And I asked Anita Minay, who is their, who is the deputy in charge of TSA, if she would think about how the community could help in the future. So she's going to think about that, talk to her staff, and should, should the unthinkable happen again, we would be ready to go and to let people know, here's the best way to help those workers. So they were great. They, they cleared 200, over 260,000 passengers traveling through all the security checks and the longest wait they had during that time, and remember, this was over the holidays, was 16 minutes. So it was a phenomenal job and I know that the city deeply appreciates them coming to work in such difficult circumstances. So thank you, community, for rallying. Thank you above all to TSA workers for continuing to do your job and making everybody safer and keeping the whole system working. And that's it. Councilwoman Telemontes?
Can I add to, uh, your comments in regards to Mayor Tornick from Pasadena? I spoke with him and he says he's been, he goes to a different high school every year to give his State of the City. So it was, when he told me that, I go, yeah, it is very interesting. So that was, thank you. It's different than what we're used to.
Um, are there any additional agenda items? Councilmember Frutos?
Yes, um, I received a lot of calls from residents regarding the Channel Two news stories, so I like to ask our city manager if we can get a report back on our hydrogen bus, where it's at, how we got here, and what's the future of that? And this way the public can be informed because, uh, they're concerned. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Springer?
Um, may we please, um, consider adding back the final three-minute, um, public comment? Just kind of a wrap-up for...
I'm just going to ask everybody right now, please don't say whether you agree or disagree. If you wanted to come back, just say yes, you're willing to discuss it.
Councilmember Murphy?
Um, I don't think it's really an additional agenda item, but I've received a number of calls from the St. Anaya Park people. They're very concerned that if we don't have a town hall meeting, Mike, Mike, God, I leave it on all the time? Sorry. Um, they're very concerned that if we don't have the town hall meeting soon, that it'll be too late. Uh, and I told them I couldn't tell them when it was coming, but I knew that we had discussed it and, uh, that we were willing to do it. So is there any, any thoughts on that?
I don't think this has come back to us for a discussion yet. I do know, and I expect that next week, the professor, maybe, um, Mr. Prescott or Mr. Davis, you can tell us when, uh, Mr. Srivastava will be coming to present.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, uh, uh, he will be, he, he would like to be here next week. He's going to try to be here next week. Uh, they have midterms that end at 5:00 PM, so it'll take him about 90 minutes to get here from UCLA. Um, so we're going to try to make that work, uh, so that we can get that report to you before the students get much further.
So, I don't know.
There has been a request, but I don't believe the staff has been prepared to come back to us with a recommendation so that we can discuss it.
Okay, so I, I just don't have the information. That's all.
Is that accurate, Madam City Attorney, Mr. Davis?
It's literally a staffing issue. It's on our to-do list, but we just can't get work done, so we've frozen all kinds of work.
Okay.
As you heard tonight in reports, CDD staff is just overwhelmed.
Okay. I, I, I just needed an answer, so I...
We'd like to do it next week. I'm sorry, just...
I understand, okay.
Um, I, I'd like to ask the council if you would consider, um, our city sending a letter to possibly Scott Weiner, the Assembly Member who introduced SB 50, similar to...
You can't ask them to consider sending the letter. You can ask us to bring back for council discussion whether we should send such a letter. So that, I keep trying...
Would no one object to bringing, uh, to having the staff bring back a verbal on whether or not to send a letter?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Should we talk to Senator?
No, no comments.
Okay, okay, okay.
We will bring that back for your consideration.
Thank goodness.
Strategy.
We're trying to get it done faster than we can. Uh, thank you all for a great discussion tonight. Really, really good. Uh, we will now adjourn to Thursday, this Thursday, February 7th, 2019, in the Community Services Building in Room 104 at 6:00 o'clock. Good night, everyone.